And call our council meeting to order, please join me for the oath.
Yeah, pledge.
I have for the oath. The pledge of allegiance. Don't worry, you don't all need to know the oath.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, well, welcome everyone. We got a very special start to our meeting this evening. We have a swearing in. And so we're going to go ahead and start with that before I call the roll. Otherwise, I'm not sure how to roll call the counselors because we gotta do the oath. So with that, we're going to have pictures. So maybe as councillors want to kind of stand off to the side. Let me have you go out front here with our city reporter down. Okay. Councillor, please repeat after me. I, Lyndy Hanley, do solemnly swear.
I, Lyndy Hanley, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faith faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
Faithfully perform the duties of Sandy City Councilor.
During my entire term of office.
During my entire term of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. There's gonna be, is there anyone that you want to take pictures with? Start it, please. Yeah. And then Jeff, you want to, or I can take, oh. You want me to take?
Somebody on the phone, you'd like me to.
Oh, yes, please. Of course. Let me get one with you there. I messed it up. I'm sorry. I'm not an iPhone user. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, councillor, would you like to say your words before we get started?
Speech.
Yeah, I always surprise people with that.
No, I'm just, I'm really excited for this opportunity to serve our community. I love the city. And I'm super, always super impressed with the number of people that that serve in all the capacity. And I'm excited to become one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, and we're very excited to have you, and thank you for stepping up to serve our community. Absolutely. All right, with that, and then if you're here for our meeting, please stay and enjoy it. If you're here for the swearing in and would like to go home and watch Monday Night Football or something, feel free to do that as well. With that, I will go ahead and call for the roll, please.
Yes, councillor Meaton, present. Councillor Smallwood.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon.
Here.
Councillor Walker.
Here.
Councillor Hanley. Councillor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Palin.
Here. Thank you for that, Jeff. I always start with a review of tonight's agenda, and I will do that now. I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. I'll then get into public comment. Jeff, have we had anybody either in person or online submit for public comment?
No, Mayor, we haven't.
And Tyler, do we have any responses?
No, Mayor.
All right. After that, we will get into our consent agenda with our city council meeting minutes from our October 21st, 2024 meeting, as well as the declaration of a community-wide event, Winterfest 2024. See those lights getting set up? Under presentations, we have the Sandy Drinking Water Reinvestment Program update. Ordinances, we have a public hearing for ordinance 2024-22 on Chap Sandy Municipal Chapter 1208 for code modifications. There will be an opportunity to testify at that time during that public hearing, if that's what you would like to do. Under old business, we have our police staffing needs, as well as the options for alternative wastewater treatment systems during the development moratorium. Under new business, we have the contract approvals for on-call construction services for drinking water wastewater facility minor upgrades, as well as the IGA with Portland Water Bureau for the drinking water design and construction. A roundoff for evening with our report from our city manager and our councillor and committee reports. With that, I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. Hearing none, and hearing that we don't have anyone that submitted for public comment, I will move ahead to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our October 21st meeting, as well as the declaration of community-wide event, Winterfest 2024. Unless there's discussion, I will entertain a motion to adopt.
We can motion, we accept the consent.
Sure, second.
Also.
Councillor Sheldon, with the motion to adopt the consent agenda, as second by councillor Hokinson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed names, motion carries. I'm moving ahead to presentations, the Sandy Drinking Water Reinvestment Program update. Tyler, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. So as you know, we're underway with significant reinvestment in our drinking water here for the city of Sandy. And tonight, we have a presentation from Jenny and consultant team to give you a status update on where we're at and where we're going. And I will keep my comments brief, so we can just get right to the meat of the subject.
Thank you. Here, just give us a moment, set up. So those of you who are speaking, if we could sit up here, I think that's Dick and Aaron. Porsha, are you speaking as well? Here, let's maybe at the end.
One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah.
One more.
Well. Good evening, council. As was requested a few months ago, different councillors have different levels of familiarity with the drinking water investment program. Formerly, three councillors were in our oversight committee, but given that we've been working on this program for 18 months, the intention of tonight is to give an overview to everyone. We're going to cover the history, the status of our projects, funding and financing, as well as risks. We're not asking for any decisions from council at this time, but please feel free to ask us any questions you would like. So just a high-level agenda, but time is tight tonight, so I think we'll move move right into introductions of our Sandy program team. One more slide, please. So who is working on the Sandy Drinking Water Program reinvestment? So as oversight from the public works team is myself in the role of Public Works Director. AJ Thorne, our Assistant Public Works Director. He is the city's representative from the capital side on all these major projects. And Ryan Wood also here tonight. He is acting in operation and maintenance capacity. The three of us are on all the strategic and executive level meetings, you know, discussing how we integrate these systems from all three perspectives. Here tonight is our wonderful program team from Stantec. So Dick Tally, as you know, is the program manager. He provides strategic oversight, brings in everyone at Stantec as needed. Porsha Inman, Deputy Program Manager. Porsha runs everything from the schedules to our contracts, to our financing, to our reimbursement, to our risks, to our communications and dashboards. So essentially, she runs everybody. And Wes Silva in the green, he's our construction manager, also worked on our Sandy Clean Waters, stepped in to help finish the stress test. He provides oversight to all our construction contracts. Also, our two design experts, Aaron Eater, who is running our Portland, Portland Water Bureau connection through the Bull Run Transmission System. And some of you at the Alder Creek tour met Adam Odell. And Adam Odell is the engineer running Alder Creek, many other systems. Some of you commented on the thousand-page design document for the membrane procurement that was Adam's work. So these provide technical oversight for our design consultants to make sure the design consultants aren't missing anything and are doing everything right. It's a really high level of expertise required. And they in turn are managing Keller, who is the design engineer for Alder Creek. We just signed that a few meetings ago, maybe last meeting. And then Conso is our design engineer that Aaron is managing. They are doing the Bull Run pump station and the connection to the Portland Water Bureau. Next slide, please. We wanted just to start out with why, why is this important? Why are we here? So we're going to talk a little bit about 2022 when we were starting to look at the status of the drinking water system here. The city was under a bilateral compliance agreement with EPA and Oregon Health Administration that they had signed along with Portland Water Bureau for treatment of cryptosporidium in 2018. I say it all the time. So the city at that time had been getting funding together. The former Public Works Director, because there wasn't a clear decision as to should we just buy all our water from Portland? Should we decommission Alder Creek? We have these water rights at Salmon Creek. And so very wisely, he said, we need to do a water system master plan. So, you know, we're, we're investing major dollars. We need to look at the long-term solution and figure out what to do. Then what happened? We went into a major pandemic, and there were other things happening in other utilities. So if we move ahead, in February of 22, we were a year behind submitting our master plan. Alder Creek was unreliable, down to half capacity with no redundancy. Our wholesale water agreement, we purchased water from Portland Water Bureau, was expiring. And at that point, we had elected to build a second treatment plant. And we were behind with the EPA compliance agreement, which at the time supplied half of our water in the summer. There was also, we said, an imminent risk to Sandercock Reservoir, which we determined and we have fixed. So the team had to immediately jump in and run triage, essentially. We really had to prioritize, and we really had to make up schedule. If we move on to the next slide. So the need for the investment, three different things. We have a growing community and aging infrastructure. It doesn't last forever. Many of our systems are well beyond its useful life, and it's, it's time to replace them. The access to the Bull Run water, as well as emergency preparedness, is becoming really important. We've looked for many years for large groundwater sources in Sandy, and they, they just don't exist. So moving our connection to Portland gives us access to the Columbia Well Field, which at its peak can produce over 90 million gallons a day of groundwater. So if there's fires, such as we've experienced, that threaten Alder even Bull Run, we do have access. It's an umbilical cord that will always serve Sandy, no matter what happens. And keeping rates affordable as well. We've come to you many times, putting together a lot of different loan packages, trying to keep the utility rates as affordable as possible. So with that, we have two major programs underway. And so our design team is going to jump in, give you the oversight of where we are. So next slide. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Tally.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Glad to be here tonight. Jenny did an excellent job of kind of laying out where we started with the reinvestment program, the drinking water reinvestment program. And at that time, we kind of decided, well, there's kind of a three-step approach, right? There's the triage you mentioned to get things stable. And then there's an interim investment we need to make to ensure that we've got a reliable supply for a near-term 2040, 2045 kind of timeframe. And then there's a longer-term vision of where does Sandy position itself, you know, for 2045 and beyond, using the great assets that, that you have in your system. So when we looked at it, a lot of it was based around what was Sandy's demand, right? What, and like most water supplies, there's a period of time, this time of year, where your water demand is, is pretty limited, but it ramps up in the summer with irrigation demand. And so when we began to assess what you had as in terms of assets, it became pretty apparent that nine months out of the year, Sandy was in pretty good condition if we could get the combination of Brownell Springs and Alder Creek supply stable. Beyond that, we had to look to other sources to augment your demand seasons in the summer. And so when we began to recognize that the September 2027 date was really key in that to avoid curtailment or water shortages in the summer months, we had to get a connection to Bull Run. The uniqueness of that is you already have a connection to Bull Run today. The problem is, is it's upstream or ahead, if you will, of the new Bull Run filtration facility. So water at that point becomes what they call raw water or unfiltered water. So Sandy had the choice of either building your own treatment plant there at Hudson Intertie, or take advantage of the assets there that Portland Water Bureau is making the investment in. And given the short timeframe and the cost, the decision was fairly simple to hook into the, into the water, the Portland Water System and dovetail Sandy's new assets in with the construction of that. The second piece of that was to get your Alder Creek plant stable. You'll hear us sometimes use the word firm capacity in the water planning world. What that really means is do you have a single point of failure anywhere? And if you do, does that limit your ability as a, as a utility provider to service your customer base? Well, a lot of your Alder Creek plant has got a single point of failure, meaning all the rest of the plant could work, but the one last pump that takes water from the plant and gets it out to your distribution system, there's only one. If the motor goes out, if the fuse trips, if the bearing seas, the seals go out of the pump, you don't have, it isn't like you lose capacity, you go from capacity to zero. The plant had been running under some difficult challenges. And so that was kind of our interim triage, was to get it stable. And then Adam will talk a little bit more about how we're going to take it from stable to a reliable source. Aaron will be talking a little bit more about the connection to Alder, to the Portland system. Yep, yep, cool. I'm catching up with you.
Next slide.
Yep.
Yeah.
There we go. So when we looked at it, and Jenny hit the nail on the head, right? It was how do we do this in a short period of time? Five years seems like a long time until you have to engineer something, permit something, find funding for something, find a contractor, get it built, get it started, commissioned, and time gets by. So we really jumped on the water program side really aggressively, because we really think from, from an advisor to the city, this may be more important or as important as anything that you're facing right now in terms of time, right? Because on September 27th, we will no longer be able to rely on the Hudson connection without putting some sort of filtration piece in place. So when we think about 27 is not that far away, right? And so I think that, you know, the, the ask of all of us in, in the room is we really got to keep our eye focused on this water system over the next 18 months to get it, to get the permits in place, get the design in place, get the funding in place, so that we can do that construction and leave us, leaves ourselves some time so that we're finishing up that connection by 2027. So as you go into the summer of 2028, you have ample water supply for that irrigation demand. That all? Everybody cool? All that make good sense?
Dick, I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you go back a couple of slides, please, to the graph? Yeah. Okay, so it's showing the water, the Alder Creek rehab capacity coming on in 28. And I thought that was going to be coming on earlier because we may not have the other thing in 27.
This is a, this is a slide from the master plan from the consort slides. So it was showing the water production in 28. We have been able to accelerate.
Right, so we'll, we'll see the, my question is, we'll be seeing the Alder Creek rehab capacity come on sooner than 28, right?
Yes.
Yes.
No, great question. No, the focus there has really been, as you guys know, you've been so supportive of us of coming in with early out packages to get that membrane secured. Adam, I don't want to steal his thunder because he's got some great thunder to come, but, you know, there's been a lot movement on that front. And, and the focus is to really get there by 27 with Alder. So we've got that even if, if for whatever reason, the September 27, we still have a reliable 2 million gallons a day coming out of Alder Creek. And as you know, we've spent a bunch of time measuring that creek flow, right? Because there's not ever really been any gauging on that stream to determine what its yearly cycle is. And, and we've been doing continual monitoring of that. And there's no doubt, there's periods of time in the year where that stream suffers from flow. But I think the combination of Alder and Brownell Springs and a connection to Bull Run will be totally good as a community until probably 2045, where we're going to have to make the next level of investment. Any other questions? All good? All right, thank you. So we're going to risks, we're going to risk, all right? When we look at the risk right now, I kind of led into that a little bit about asking all of us in the room to really concentrate on the water over the next 18 months. We've got all the pieces kind of lined up in that we've gotten IGAs in place with water. Well, first off, Jenny's hard, hard work. She was able to secure a long-term water supply agreement. That was really kind of the center pin of, of how we move forward with Portland. Then the next piece was to get these IGAs in place, one of which you'll be considering tonight, to take advantage of the assets they have and the assets that Sandy has as a community water system, a linked system. What I mean by that is Water Bureau has the water, but you have the storage. And you have the elevated storage that allows you to gravity feed in the event of a power outage or in the event of a fire or whatever. You have the ability to take your elevated storage and backfeed that system. There's a lot of benefit to all the ratepayers and all of, well, no, my Clackamas Counties, obviously, to, to share those assets between agencies. And that was kind of the heart of that IGA was how do we work together as neighbors and as commonality in terms of providing utility services to our ratepayers, the, the most cost-effective way we can? So that IGA was put in place. That then set us up to be able to start developing that connection. While that was all going on, we were pivoting and working very diligently on Alder Creek. And most of you took a tour of that and kind of seen the condition of that facility. And so there was a big decision there that was made is let's not abandon this. It's a great asset. It's a great resource. Like all of us, to get a little old, we need a little loved one every once in a while, right? And so it just needs a little love. So we're stepping in there and replacing the filter systems with a membrane and making some connections so that you have a reliable and you're no longer tied to a single point failure, like I talked about earlier, and you can be able to deliver water. All of that work is in place now. So permits are being filed, engineering firms are hired, equipment's being ordered and manufactured. What we're waiting for now is to get the funding in place, to get the land use documents in place, so we can hire the contractors. So as we collectively work on that, that's going to have to be the focus to really move that ball down the court. Because if you work backwards from September of 27, you got to give contractors time to build stuff, right? And if we get too aggressive on the schedule, or we try to compress it, it only drives up the price and drives down the competition, right? Which is two things we don't want to do. Well, we want to keep, Sandy's got a good reputation with the contracting community. We want to keep it that way. So with that, we do risks, right? We, I think you'll, I know this team is sick and tired of talking about risk, right? But we really work on risks about, and, and what I just laid out with you are we have schedule risks. We have financial risks. We have permitting risks. All of these things, we, we walk through a risk register. We identify them, we talk them over. It's not a, it's an evergreen document. It's continually evolving as new information comes in. Sometimes problems are solved and they get to close that risk. But we're doing that to make sure we're concentrated on the right things, right? Are we focused on those risks that have the most impact ultimately to the ratepayers of Sandy, right? Because that's where it all stops, right? It, it works its way through this room, but eventually it all ends up in a bill, right? And so how do we work that so that we're keeping control of that? So this risk register that we work on a lot is telling us where these risks are. And right now, in the water system, this land use permits, it's getting the last piece of the funding in place, and it's getting that design tightened up so we can bid it, right?
These risks ranks in the work?
Yes. Yep. You know, the, the, the big one, I think that, you know, this team is really focused on right now is that funding package, right?
Really one and two.
It is. Yep. The IGA with Portland, I think, has come along pretty good. That's going to be a two-part process, right? You're considering the first phase tonight, which is kind of the handshake. And then once we get design, both Water Bureau gets some more of their design done and costs established, we get a little more of our design. Then there'll be where we look at that and do what is the caution? What's the appropriate way to share these assets and resources? That'll be the second IGA. That might be a year away yet. I'm guessing to get real construction pricing, it's going to take a little while. But, you know, the schedule is, is right up there with funding, right? And that, and they're late. We're, we're kind of at the point, these two gentlemen here are supreme managers of talent and time. And they have moved us forward to the point that they're going to have bid documents ready to go here. They have some ready now. They're going to have some ready in Q1, and we're kind of saying, good, good work, gentlemen. Hang on, we got to get money in front of you, right? So those are the risks that we've got to really focus on.
Just to clarify that, I think what I discovered is it's a lot easier to get large loans for wastewater sewer systems than for drinking water. And to me, that's fairly shocking, but that's the state of the world. We applied for 88 millions in loans. We were ranked number seven in Oregon, and we got $6 million, which we're putting towards Alder. Business Oregon, as you remember, has been a life-saving organization. The maximum loan they'll give out is 10 million. So we've come to you, I believe, four times with smaller little loans that we packaged together to do Alder Creek. Those have been easier and faster to get, which has helped us move the needle along. But the last piece is we still need 39.5 million in funding. That includes a significant amount of management reserve, which we prefer not to use. But we need to have that available just in case things happen. And those larger loans take time. Tyler has been helping me with that. We have looked at getting bonds, which are just easier to spend, less administrative burden. But they do hit the water rates much harder because you have to raise your utility rates, and so it just hasn't been viable. But either way, we're working on two other pieces. Sort of our default assumption is another WIFI alone. We do have experience. We finally closed that on the wastewater side. But that, I anticipate, will take at least a year of pretty heavy pushing. So just getting that larger funding piece because we're ready. We're ready to build and kind of.
How long do we take on our last WIFI?
Well, four years, but one year was taken in getting us still considered to be a town less than 10,000 because we got better share, so.
Given our 2027, that's in the years, risky, isn't it?
Yeah.
Business Oregon has offered to invite us to apply for a $6 million bridge loan in February. But Aaron and his team for the pipeline piece are ready to bid right now. And so that's one of the biggest focuses is just rounding out the funding package.
So when you said they're ready to bid right now, and the, how much do we need to cover that bit?
Six million.
That's six million. So the bridge just is the, it doesn't get us in front. It's just fair to keep on.
Yeah, but that's fully executed, the six million, right?
We won't spend six million on day one.
No, I know, but the loan has already been fully executed, right?
This is a new loan.
It's another six.
Another six?
Yeah, and that's, you know, I totally respect where you're at. Because I think I got Porsha because she keeps me lined out on this. We have multiples of loans, but they're all dedicated to certain things. And I know where your head's at right now. You're councillor, you, you, we did have a $6 million loan. That one is the drinking water SRF, and that is dedicated to Alder Creek. Now we got to get a $6 million loan that is dedicated, getting that pipeline in down Bluff Road. So when you get these loans, it isn't like they just say, here are six millions, spend it as you see fit, right? They, it has to be very targeted around a specific project that they can amortize against in that loan. And so we have a $7 million loan to do the design of the Water Bureau system. We've got, and that's all we've got so far on the Portland to Sandy connection. That's where we need the bulk of the WIFI funding. We got to pay for the pump station, we got to pay for that pipeline, we got to pay for getting us back to a free chlorine system. Then down at Then down at Alder Creek, we've got the two million dollar loan. And then we got the seven and a half million dollar loan, both nine and a half. See, that's why she's here, right? Nine and a half million dollar loan. Both of those were out of the Special Public Works Fund. And she's gonna go through this and so you can see it all. But those are dedicated to the membrane procurement. The hiring of the engineer. And all of that. And then we've got the other six million, right? From the drinking water SRF. And that's to pay for just conveyance pieces. Of the Alder system. So it's, it's a very complicated funding package.
Okay, so I have one question.
Yep.
So the Wiffy for forty-four and a half million that were. Send a letter of interest in, it's been submitted. Is that now going to be? Thirty-eight million because we're getting the six million from the bridge for the bridge stuff?
So we don't know if we're gonna get the six million. That's decided at their board meeting in February. They could say no. And we did submit a letter of interest to Wiffy, but they needed more things from us.
Yeah, I'm just trying, trying to kind of like, what's, you know, the total was seventy and now is it seventy-six?
No, the total is still seventy. We actually have it detailed out further in the presentation, so.
Just super, super quick, what, what happens? Should, I realize it's highly unlikely, unlikely, but the Portland infiltration plant goes drastically sideways. Where are you sitting?
I'm, I'm glad you asked because these are some of the conversations I want us to have. It's, it's a lot of money. They, they have a lot to do. And they've seen a lot of delays for various reasons. So. Our plan is Alder Creek has enough time to get up and running, and the capacity will be two.
Plus your, your water rate is two point six.
But in the summer, it doesn't flow that much, so.
One point eight is what we're counting on in the summer from Alder and then another three hundred thousand from Brownell.
But could we continue to get our untreated water? I mean, assuming Portland gets some sort of. You know, grace given because they're not ready, wouldn't that grace also flow to us? And then we could still continue to supplement with their, with the untreated water we're getting from there?
One would think so, right? One would logically come to the conclusion that if the EPA bilateral order. Is a granted extension, that that extension will be granted to both Water Bureau and Sandy. I have no control over EPA and probably nobody in this room does, right? So I don't know where they're gonna come down on that.
But I mean, if it, it's to all Portland's customers, you know, whether it's Gresham or whatever, I mean, they're not gonna.
The problem is because of where our connection is. They can default to their groundwater system and they serve all the customers, I believe, but we don't have access to that. The groundwater is considered treated. So. Our choice would be, assuming there's not an extension, which. I don't think we should assume there's an extension. We either have to forego that water source. Or we have to pay several million dollars to engineer design permit and install some kind of temporary treatment. And. There are plans for doing that, but frankly, I. We're pressed for dollars as it is. I, I don't like seeing us putting in temporary systems.
Well, and we're, we're running out of time to even design and do that.
We are. And so. Really what you're talking about is. Our water in the summer demands, so we would be looking at some kind of voluntary curtailment. But I think we could focus on a, a small amount of what we're talking about is irrigation. It's not going to be popular and we're working against that. But I think where we are right now is it's really the summer where we have, where we need Portland, you know, the, the irrigation season into September. And so we're good through September of twenty-seven, and then we start going into the lower demand season. So we have a certain amount of grace where we could get by through the winter season of twenty-seven and twenty-eight, but we have to be done. By probably March of twenty-eight to be safe.
So Portland goes sideways, which I'm assuming means it doesn't come online.
Or it's late.
Or it's way, way late.
Because it's delayed, 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 delayed.
Then, then. With this plan that we have, we're gonna have roughly two million, two M G C D, right?
Two M G D.
M G D.
Plus the contribution from Brownell, which is regulated down, so it's small.
Which would mean past twenty twenty-eight, we would be in, you know, no asset watering.
Not, not entirely, just volunteer.
You know, worst case, that's what we'd be looking at. We'd still have drinking water and some areas might not, which at that point we would be better off than in some communities.
But again, we're a Portland customer. We know they're gonna work with us. Aaron has this pipeline in. Even if it's not done, parts of it are going to be done. And we have a really good relationship. These engineers are also designing the treatment facilities there. So we would be working on ways for them to move water to us.
Right, then I assume that.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Just one more question regarding that whole well water and stuff. So if we have our pipeline in, you know, ready to kind of connect to them. Can we grab some of the well water? If the filtration part of it is not online?
These are conversations we need to have.
Don't need an answer now, thanks.
Well, but part of it is we need a, we need a pump station to move the water. So again.
Right?
Well, depends on the permit problems.
It depends on land use and it depends on us getting the funding in because we don't have, we've been building up our reserves. But we, at this point, we have about four million dollars in cash sitting in the water reserve, so. We haven't been saving for twenty years, so we don't have some cash to just pay for this. So these are. These are what we're managing and we're focused on, but really it's, it's the funding of these land use permits.
I don't want to go too far into a funding rabbit hole, but I'll just think one point, which is. We could certainly go out and get a water bond and, and stay on ta- or on, on target. No issues. That's just not the most favorable funding option at this point. So we're doing everything we can to find the lowest interest rate, the best repayment terms. Grant funding, everything else, which is why we're sort of, you know. Proceeding cautiously right now to make sure that we have the least amount of rig impact as possible in the water fund. But should we get to a point where we absolutely need funding to go do the next step or build the next thing, we could get. Funding relatively quickly. It's just not as favorable as some of the other options that are out there.
Okay. Next one?
Yeah, I think maybe we should skip to Alder.
I think we should.
Yeah.
You want, you want to skip Sandra, huh? Okay. Uh, so, uh, thank you, everybody. Um, I am your design manager for Alder Creek. I'm managing the engineer who's doing the detailed design. I prepare the conceptual design. Um, I helped purchase and specify the containerized membrane system that is effectively on order. So what we're doing, you know, I can't say enough about your operation staff. We've been working for about a year. I mean, they've been working about a year to. Get Alder stable. So there are three, there are three filters in at Alder Creek. Only one has been operational in the last twenty years. And we are, we're this close, I should say they are this close to getting those other two filters up and running. So we're building and we're trying to. You know, get the systems as stable as we can. So, you know, kudos to Ryan and Jenny and to their team. So that's been in process or in, yeah, in moving forward.
Can you just clarify, there's two extra filter systems, but it only doubles the capacity, correct?
Correct. The, the two filters that we are, they, they are just getting started are, are half of the capacity of the large filter. So, yeah. Good question. Um, what we've been doing to date is to really kind of push that, that schedule milestone that you saw earlier in twenty twenty-eight. We Stan Tech prepared the, the specifications for the membrane system. So what we are doing right now is waiting on a submittal. We are going to get two submittals from the membrane system supplier. We've already received one. The next one is coming, I believe, next week. And we will review those submittals, and if we approve them, uh, we will issue what is called notice of fabrication. So we will, the membrane system supplier will then begin fabricating the containerized membrane systems. It will probably take all of twenty twenty-five to get those built. And then, um, delivered in early twenty twenty-six. I'm kind of getting ahead of myself here a little bit.
Do you want the schedule signed?
No. Yeah, yeah, if you want, if we're, if we're running behind, we're running behind.
Yeah.
So next month, we're gonna get a thirty percent design from Keller. We'll review it. Um, the, the key dates, the key dates here are thirty percent next month, which is moving pretty quickly. And then next summer in July, we're anticipating hundred percent design documents. Um, right there, Q1 of twenty twenty-six, uh, the membrane modules could be delivered. We have already negotiated storage. Um, if we're not ready to receive those, we can have the membrane system supplier store those for up to six months. Or we can take delivery, we can store them somewhere here in Sandy if we need to. Uh, but the plan is to get that contract awarded at the end of twenty twenty-five and then start moving towards construction.
Help me understand why it takes, I mean, if these are kind of off, I would say off the shelf, because we know that, you know, they're built, they're getting built, but they're not. Something that you have to kind of start from scratch is the way it was described to me, I think. But how, why would?
Well, they're, I would describe them as pre-engineered, the pre-engineered systems, they got the plans and specs, but they don't, they don't just build these and wait for someone to buy them.
Right.
It's a little unique, so it does take, they have said a year, worst case.
So, but just the, you know, I'm just seeing that it's, you know, like six months to get to from thirty to six to hundred percent design.
It's usually about a year to do a hundred, a full hundred percent, except for a brand new water treatment plant. So we're moving this in only seven months. And then, um, when the membranes are delivered, the contractors on board. He, we are requiring the contractor to take responsibility of those membrane, install them, um, start them up and commission the water plant. By September twenty twenty-seven.
Did I move on too fast?
Nope, nope, I'm good. Go for it, Ed.
Yeah, so I oversaw, um, the development of the conceptual design report for the Portland to Sandy Transmission System. Uh, packaged, packaged it all up, included it with an RFP that we used to select consort of the design engineer. Year or two ago. Heard a lot of talk about the Portland Water Bureau filtration facility and the city's existing Intertie Hudson Road. Uh, so over the past several months earlier. Throughout twenty twenty-four, the Water Bureau's been underway with construction of the filtration facility. Uh, it's located about a little over two miles away from your existing connection at Hudson. Um, and additionally, uh, we're, as we talked about it, there's gonna be a new pump station at the downstream end of the Clear Wells. Associated with that filtration facility to supply Sandy's water system. Future pumping up to, uh, your existing Revenue Avenue Reservoir. So if we look at the next slide. One of the elements of the filtration facility is a fire, a smaller diameter fire line. Uh, being built down to Bluff Road. Uh, we have facilitated several productive conversations with Sandy and the Water Bureau over the last several months. Uh, regarding a concept of shared asset, shared construction costs. Uh, consummated in a revised water supply agreement with the Water Bureau this past summer. And the results of those conversations have resulted in. Uh, a larger diameter pipeline down to Bluff Road that will serve both Sandy's supply as well as what we talked about. And fire flow needs for the filtration facility site. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the discussions revolving. Resulting in, uh, new gravity supply from the Revenue Avenue Reservoir to supply the fire line, fire supply for the Water Bureau. Uh, two IGAs that document this agreement and shared, uh, costs and assets to save, uh, the city money. Um, next slide. So, um, we've got three parallel design tracks with the Portland to Sandy Transmission System. You've heard us talk about the Bluff Road Transmission System. You've heard us talk about the pump station at the Bull Run site and. Revenue Avenue Treatment System, City Treatment Improvements at the Revenue Avenue Site. So we've got three parallel design tracks. We, we've mentioned the. All right. Uh, so this kind of captures, uh, where we're at, design and construction schedule wise. Comparing those three separate projects. Uh, we talked about the pump station, um, being currently at sixty percent design. We're currently refining the documents to address land use, um, needs moving forward. Uh, we're looking at getting a ninety percent design submittal from consort beginning of next year. Pending land use, of course, uh, we're targeting a construction start date in June of next year. We could, uh, complete construction in May of twenty twenty-six. Um, we can go again as fast or as slow as we need to pending land use and funding availability. So there is some slush, uh, built into the schedule, uh, to, you know, in case things go sideways here or there. Uh, we're anticipating being able to, to be done at the pump station. Fingers crossed with the other things I mentioned, well before the September twenty twenty-seven date. Um, I mentioned the Revenue Avenue. Reservoir treatment improvements. Were, had some productive, uh, discussions over treatment options that concluded this last October. We're currently advancing a design to a sixty percent level early next year.
Is that the chloramine remover?
Yeah, chloramine removal addition of chlorine.
And so the technical aspects have been addressed, we're, we're moving ahead.
Yep, so, um, design next year, Adam mentioned the typical design schedule for these kind of projects is about a year. And then looking following here, twenty twenty-six for construction. And then we've talked about the transmission main, how we're pretty much ready, um, to go up contractor procurement right now. Um, Dick mentioned putting on the brakes and waiting for, to see where we're at funding wise. Uh, so we're currently looking at, reaching out to the contracting community early next year, getting a contractor on board. Starting construction and May-June timeframe next year and wrapping up construction over the summer. In time to get paving completed on Bluff, Bluff Road, uh, when it's, uh. Direct, when it's still in drive state in the next year. So I think that's the conclusion of my piece.
I think it's my turn, though. I think you discussed quite a bit of funding and finance. So, um, the budget for the drinking water reimbursement program is seventy million. Um, that split roughly twenty million for Alder Creek and forty million for the Portland to Sandy. With the remaining being management reserve. Um, all of our funding sources are listed here, the seven million, um, that's all for the Portland to Sandy. The thirty nine million, um, pending for the Wiffy to cover the remaining for the Portland to Sandy. And then all of the remainder that we currently have are for the Alder Creek. I think next slide. And so, um, our spin to date, uh, it's a little bit more than that with invoices that have come in. So I, I want to say we're around like two million, um, spent and about the same reimbursed. Um, we're doing reimbursements about every month to each funding source that we have to keep cash in the city's pockets and. Yeah. I think, was there another? Yep, that was it. Was there any questions? I feel like I went through that pretty quickly, but you, you all.
I, I was gonna give a point. We have, I think, seventeen and a half million secured for Alder Creek. But in our program budget, we also have some management reserve allocated for it just in case things come up. And we have not secured that management reserve because it's part of the final construction package. And so that's a nuance I know some of you would pick up on now. Um, and the other point is seventy million, seventy million is still holding strong. In fact, I believe when we started this out a couple of years ago, it was at eighty million. There is the potential with the cost sharing that we've been talking about with Portland Water Bureau. Do you know about the length of the line in Carpenter Lane that's gonna be the fire flow line? Is that about two miles? So. The IGA you're gonna see at the end of the meeting tonight is for a single pipeline to serve two purposes. So instead of us having to pay for a whole second line, we're going to pay them just to upsize a line that's already going in. That, that brings us savings. There's other things with us providing backup fire flow that save them installing infrastructure. So, um, but the other takeaway is, you know, been working really hard engineering and program management. Yeah, it, it just doesn't consume the same way as construction is. So, you know, we do have cash flow. You know, we do have cash flow things, but the big expenditures are coming the next couple of years as we move into construction is the, is the other point. So if we wanted to go to next steps.
Wrap this up pretty quick, um, be respectful of your time. So you've heard a lot about what we. Where we started and what we've been working on, right? And as we. You know, I have great confidence that we're going to get there, right? Um, we've laid a lot of. Uh, risks on the table tonight, but you know, they're, they're well managed and, and we have strategies. So we have to think a little bit about where do we go, where does the community go beyond twenty third, twenty twenty seven, right? And one of the things that Sandy has is just an incredible valuable. Um, gem in Salmon Creek. You have a sixteen million gallon a day water right, um, out of Salmon Creek that has been. Um, held in abeyance, so to speak, but it's still there and it's still active. And it's something that we want to look at, um, as we get, not like today, but as we start to kind of get a, a finer point. Put on what we're going to accomplish over the next eighteen months. I think one of the good things we need to do is a planning exercise to take a look at that. Water source and see what does it take and what's the investment look like about how to bring that asset back into your, into your control, right? Because that sets you up for many, many years after that, um, of growth and, um, minimizes your amount of water. You will ever need to buy from the Water Bureau and you begin then to really have a resilient. We, I, I seen head nods when we were talking about fires earlier, right? And we all know, um. We've seen it. And so Alder Creek could have a fire. Bull Run could have a fire. Well, maybe the Salmon Creek would be spared, right? Um, that coupled up with connection to the well field that we're trying to do is build you as many different connection points. So that in event, um, anything happens, you've got, the one thing you don't worry about is your water security for your town, right? So that will be some of the next steps, um. Is, is taking a look at that. I'm not going to beat away at the rest of them because y'all are tired of hearing about funding and land use and permitting. Um, but that amendment, I think we'll get started on that, the amendment to your existing water, uh, master plan. We'll get started on that this coming year to start looking at what that looks like to transfer that water right from Salmon Creek. And get it into your system in a more usable manner and get some budgeting planned. So you as a council can start to think about the future, the long term for a tutor and, and, and get out of this. Crisis management, it seems like we're in, right? So that's pretty much our. Presentation update, um, hopefully you all feel comfortable about where your city's going and where your water supplies are going and, and. Where your ratepayers money is being spent and, and the investments that we're all making in it, um. If there's any questions, we'll entertain any and all.
Questions for discussion before we move ahead.
I just would say I do, you know, the, the, some of the best news that I saw. Was the fact that we have renegotiated, you guys renegotiated the fact that we're only paying for the water that we use and not just having a flat rate. That's going to save the huge amount, money for us. Thank you. That does great, great work on doing that.
A lot of information there, a lot of work. Uh, thank, thank you so much for your time and, and for all the work that we did to it. And all the work that continues to go into this meter project, so.
Appreciate you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Can I go ahead and open a public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty two? At eight oh four P M. Calling for any extensions from the hearing body? Are there any conflicts of interest from the hearing body? All right, Kelly, uh, please provide us with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this is kind of an interesting one. We, we've started to kind of go through other code chapters and titles. Um, over the last few months, and as you're aware, we're going through it with the, the code enforcement code updates. Um, this one kind of caught us a little off guard, I'll, I'll be honest. So chapter twelve point zero eight is mainly dealing with sidewalks, curbs and driveways. Um, historically speaking, when it was last updated in nineteen seventy three, it was probably done so by the Public Works Director at that time. Um, as most of you remember, I was kind of leading the charge on the T S P modifications that we did and we adopted the new T S P in twenty twenty three. That T S P adoption made some recommended code edits to title seventeen. Um, so wider sidewalk widths, if some of you remember that, um, and a few other different changes around arterial collector on local streets. Um, then what we did after that are kind of concurrently with the adoption of that, we were going through the clear and objective code audit process. That council was very supportive of. Um, the scope of that process, though, was limited to title seventeen and then also to a few chapters in title fifteen, like the dark sky ordinance. Uh, the clear and objective audit didn't have any scope related to title twelve. So what, what occurred is, um, we adopted the T S P in twenty twenty three. We adopted the clear and objective code audit in February, I believe, of this year or so about. Um. Was that ten, eight, nine, ten months ago? Um, and then since then, we found out that, uh, chapter twelve oh eight, which we don't reference very often. Um, was last updated fifty one years ago and had a bunch of old code references. Um, I'm not going to walk through everything here, but I'll just kind of highlight a few major things that we discovered. Um, so we discovered during that is that there was a bunch of references to. The building official and other positions around the city as having authority over the right of way. Um, ever since I've worked here and long before that, it's been the Public Works Department that has that authority. So we've made a bunch of code edits throughout this chapter to reference the Public Works Department instead of the Building Division or other departments. Um. Another really odd thing was in nineteen seventy three, when they adopted this, they actually had a weird code provision in twelve oh eight, zero forty. That said that at the request of, of a developer, the city was obligated to pay for half of a survey. I don't know of anybody that's actually ever referenced that code section, but I want to get it out of there. Um. Working in different jurisdictions in my career, I've never seen a city be responsible for private surveyors, uh, work in development. So we, we need to remove that so the city doesn't get on the hook. Um. There was some references to a variance procedure, although it didn't really. It wasn't clear on what variance procedure they were, the code was intending to be speaking to. We believe it was title seventeen variance procedure, so we've made some references to that. Um. We also removed a few sections that were no longer necessary. And then I worked pretty closely with the Public Works Department staff and also our city attorney to just clean up other language. There were some old references to curb height that were no longer our standard. Um, slope for driveway approaches and, and things like that. So we're just making everything consistent with what was adopted in the new, new T S P, the clear and objective audit. And then also consistent with our standard details that the Public Works Department uses. And then the last thing I will reference here is in section twelve, zero eight, one sixty. We are modifying that to reference chapter one, uh, one eighteen for violations and to remove the reference to a hundred dollars. So as we talked about in the beginning of October, as part of the, um, the process with going through a lot of our code and doing updates for code enforcement. We're going to be removing the fine amounts in the different chapters and sections, instead referencing everything back to chapter one eighteen. So we're just proposing to do that now with this chapter. Uh, with that, what I would recommend is you hold the hearing as the mayor already alluded to. And then I would recommend city council adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty, uh. Sorry, twenty twenty four dash twenty two.
All right. Thank you for the, uh, report, Kelly. With that, we'll move ahead to public testimony. Here are guidelines for those who wish to speak. Each person, uh, must provide their name and address for the record before providing testimony. If you do not wish to state your address publicly, please email it to recorder at C I at sandy dot O R dot U S. Before you begin your testimony. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It's sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at C I dot sandy dot O R dot U S. And staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public testimony. For those of you, uh, joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand at the appropriate time and indicate you'd like to speak. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button online and wait to be recognized. And if you're participating via telephone, dial star nine in order to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll now call on each person when it's your time to speak. Each participant will receive up to five minutes to testify and our city reporter will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. I'll now call for testimony on the proposed ordinance. Mayor, looking around the room for any raised hands.
Seeing none, looking on Zoom. Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay. Uh, well, with that, I will call for the staff recap and recommendation.
I recommend that you adopt the ordinance.
For that, call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
So our second.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilor Sheldon to close the public hearing. There's a second, uh, by Councilor Walker. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nays, motion carries. All right, we're into the discussion portion. Is there questions for Kelly or?
Just a quick question, and, and this is one of the issues I have with the clear and objective as well as. Just a, a challenge to reference for, for people that aren't familiar with code. Why does section, uh, the section twelve point oh eight point zero eight zero, which is sidewalk area, areas, and I, this isn't so much of an issue. Seemed to be like the only point that it's an issue, but it literally modifies you back to chapter seventeen. Why does it even have to be in there when we struck out residential sidewalks and all the other things?
Um, the intent, yeah, the intent behind that is that we're hoping that as future T S Ps are adopted. And title seventeen is adopted, that we wouldn't have to then go back and remember to also edit this chapter right here.
Why not just take it all?
Um, it was recommended by our city attorney to reference it, so it's fully incorporated into the code.
Yeah, but go from seventeen back to twelve and out is silly to me, but I guess if that's what the. People with J D after their name says and we'll go with it.
Yeah, so it's a good question, though. So technically speaking, and a lot of people don't do this, uh, including even staff traditionally. If you, if you're looking to develop property, then you should be going to title seventeen. If you're looking at doing, say, like a house addition and it might trigger improvements to the frontage, then you'd go to title fifteen. And then that would reference you to title twelve. So title seventeen is really for like development of subdivisions, partitions, um, big commercial developments. Title twelve is really, okay, I, I need to rip out part of my sidewalk or I need to redo my driveway approach. What are the standards? And then this is the chapter you're supposed to go to.
Okay. Thank you. I had a question, that same section. What is a landscape strip?
That is the strip with the street trees in it.
That's what we don't define it and it's not used anywhere else in our code.
A landscape strip?
That phrase of landscape strip isn't used anywhere else in our code.
Um, I believe it's in chapter seventeen ninety two. I don't have that in front of me, but it should be in there. And I believe it's also in the T S P.
And why is it five feet wide? And why would that apply?
Um, that's the standard in both our T S P and in title seventeen.
For?
For the width of the landscape strip. So that's from.
What are we talking about?
That's from the curb. Yeah, so they're all, all right.
Sorry.
So you got curb. Which is six inches. And then you have a landscape strip. Which is five feet. And then this is where the, you know, the street tree comes out of.
Yeah.
And then here you have the sidewalk. Which is six feet. And then you have what's called a monumentation strip, which is six inches.
So this sounds great, but this isn't any of the communities I live in.
But.
Six foot sidewalk?
Yeah, so this, so our code used to have this as five foot sidewalk. Our T S P updated this, that all new streets put in Sandy are supposed to be six, all new sidewalks are sixteen width.
Okay.
So if you live in, if you live in an older neighborhood, chances are you do have a five foot sidewalk. But going forward in new subdivisions, it'll be six feet.
So someone has to tear up, uh, a different thing, but if someone has to tear up their sidewalk, are they bound to the six feet rule now? Or is it, or do they get to, um, go and continue the five foot?
It'd be the five foot because the right of way is not going to be wide enough to put a six foot in, yeah.
Um, your twelve oh eight oh five oh sidewalk constructed in a different manner. What, what, what do they propose other than concrete sidewalks? And then are we talking those paving stones or?
Yeah, that, that's a great question, um. I, I don't know. It'd probably be something like that.
But it's just, they have to go through the variants, is that the deal?
Okay. Yeah, and I don't, I don't think there'd be many circumstances where we would want that.
Right, okay. And then, uh, I wasn't there, you know, I was kind of reading through this, trying to understand, but just, and maybe it's already in seventeen. But the curb cuts for the, um, you know, what we just had O dot do all over the place. Do we have, is, is that required in the, um, when they build the sidewalks and the curbs?
Yeah, you mean the ADA ramp?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's required. Um, there's a standard detail for that.
For both residential and commercial?
Correct. And then O dot even has a different standard detail than we have. Um, so that, that is.
Kelly. Does a planter strip the same as a landscape strip?
Yeah.
So seventeen ninety two calls it a planter strip.
So we, okay, so we could modify that one word to be a planter strip instead of a landscape strip.
I've seen this as, I, I did a quick search in the code, says landscape strips in seventeen eighty four. Uh, pedestrian bicycle.
Yeah, and that's what we're referencing here is chapter seventeen eighty four and twelve point zero eight point zero eight zero.
Okay. All right, are we ready to move to the first reading? Or? I'm going to call for the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four, best twenty two.
The mayor ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty two and ordinance amending chapter twelve point zero eight of title twelve of the Sandy municipal code.
Your motion to approve the first reading.
I moved to approve first reading ordinance twenty twenty four twenty two.
There a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilor Walker, a second by Councilor Sheldon. Uh, to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries, seeing that we're, um, the animus, I will call for the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty two.
Or this twenty twenty four dash twenty two and ordinance amending chapter twelve point zero eight of title twelve of the Sandy municipal code.
Um, is there a motion to adopt the second reading?
I'm moving to approve the second reading of the ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty two.
Our second. Second.
Then we second.
Motion by Counselor, um, Maiden, a second by, let's see, lastly. Handling, Counselor Handling. See, uh, so now you're just messing with me, guys. I got, not in the routine of that. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nays. Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving ahead, uh, to old business, uh, police staffing needs. Police staffing needs, Tyler.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the council will likely recall that we've had, um, some discussions. Around the topic of staffing in the police department over the last couple of meetings, um, on October twenty first. We, uh, the council had a discussion around, uh, potentially adding two additional F T E to the police department. And one of the questions that remained at, uh, during that meeting was whether or not Chief Husky was supportive of that, had a training plan in place. And, uh, it really met his, um, needs for the department as it currently exists. So bringing it back before you this evening, um, also joined by Chief Husky here to answer any questions that you have. Don't really have any new information to provide you, um, since the last meeting, other than happy to answer any further follow up questions about the, uh. Personnel within the police department. And then you'll know that the staff report, uh, doesn't have recommended motion language. That's because there was a couple of different, uh, ideas and motions that were being passed around at the last meeting, so didn't want to, um. Uh. Get out of step and, and provide specific motion language. We're going to do that with the council to have that discussion and, and go from there.
Welcome, Chief Husky, um. I, I guess I'll just start with you, um, I know you were, you were able to be here for the presentation, you know, on the police staffing study. And if you've, uh, watched some of the discussion. Tree uh watched some of the discussion afterwards, just. You know, what's your takeaways of that study and uh you know, and and. Looking sorry with the commotion behind you, uh but what's your takeaways of that study and kind of just looking ahead and. And what the needs are and and council wants to support you and your leadership role in the department, support our police department. Uh just what were some of your takeaways and and needs for the immediate future?
Uh thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um I do agree with this, the staff, the study that was done, um I've now been in this position for three months and it's allowed me the opportunity to. Uh watch our officers in action and review their. Their daily activities and and what they're responding to in our community. Um it's it's very obvious to me that we are understaffed to. Properly and safely do our job. Um, when we're dealing with time off requests, uh training, a- anything that comes with with normal staffing. Uh it's quite clear that commonly. We're understaffed in this city to to handle emergencies. Um, I think we all know that. You know, there are daily activities that police respond to that are kind of routine, if you will. Uh but when that really, really bad thing happens and that requires more attention and more officers. It's really hard to uh rely on our partners who may be, you know, a half hour to an hour away to come assist us. Would be much safer for our officers and for our community if we had staffing that could handle any given situation at the time. Uh I I do support uh what the staffing study stated, um I know they recommended three positions plus one with our retention. Um. But in assessing that, there are some equipment needs that that I've that I've stated in the document you guys all have. Um. And I would, I would suggest that we do move forward with with staff in our department with additional bodies.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Are uh questions for chief or discussion points? Counselors would like to bring up?
Can I ask you just a clar- point of clarification? First of all, great, Mayor, glad to see you get out of that O S P mode. Second thing is, uh I didn't hear your last statement, did you say your priority is staff or equipment?
I think. There's a a probably a priority with equipment. Uh a certain level of equipment now, uh. We're short on some equipment, we're sharing equipment and it's equipment that, in my opinion, I don't. Would rather our officers not share such as body cameras. Uh I think that's a very important piece of equipment that every officer needs to have, and you'll see that I'm not wearing one. Right now, it's because there's not one available for me to put on, and it would be nice if we all had one. My wife asks me every night when I go home, where's my body camera? And I tell her it's more important for the officers to have them out on patrol than it is for me to have one sitting behind a desk. Um. I think uh. We have the ability right now, and this is dependent on what kind of finances are available to the police department moving forward, I understand we're. In the kind of the last stretch of a biennium, if you will, um. If I worked closely with the city manager, I I believe we could purchase some necessary equipment to get us up to a position where the additional bodies. Um, could be like a second phase. I think we could probably purchase some equipment now and maybe put one additional body on. Um, the last thing that I want to do as a, as a chief is is lay somebody off if we can't. Have a long-term strategy for this. Um, as a community, we would suffer if we had to do that. As an agency, we would definitely suffer for future recruiting. You never want to put your agency in that position. Um, but I I believe that we could probably identify some long-term funding strategies. And uh get some necessary equipment out in the field for our officers now. And then maybe put one additional body on now and look at that long-term strategy for those additional bodies at the next biennium.
So one, so one officer. Uh and I'm, I'm a. I'm guessing that's in addition of the, to the, and I'm sorry, I don't have the proper name, the community res, the community resource officer. Position with Clackamas County. Um, and the idea being is is, you know, I mean, with the money and the contingency and stuff, we do have a little, we have. Some run room there to really feel like we could fund one position for several years. So anyways, that would be my case, I can think on that.
Yeah. But I I agree with what Stan said, um at last time he called it the cops grant, uh I think we should call it the Stan grant. Uh I mean, it is on, and and I give him with all seriousness, I'm giving him that credit because I I I like the idea of. My concern is the, is the short-term. Solution with a long-term problem, and I think that offers us a little bit of relief uh by spreading it out. So I I I do uh think that one is good. And I think that's, I think with the additional ones that are coming on, I think, I think that will hopefully off- offer some uh. Things that allow them to get up and kind of run. Um, I also want to go down to the safety equipment down here, and I think that um. Body cameras, I think, are a huge uh risk mitigation tool for us to use. And the fact that our guys and gals are having to share those. And uh aren't properly equipped, especially when they have take-home cars. And may be involved in the situation on their way to and from work, I think is problematic and should be fixed. Now, the tasers is a, is a, is a tool again. It's a, to have our officers out there without um at least the ability to use an alternative. Means of. Um, control, I think, is super important. I don't know, I'd be curious, do we have to do all this, the all? Four of them, the full twenty. At this, I don't know when you're, expect your people to be hitting the road and, you know, even if it's in training, but I don't, I don't, I just don't understand the answer in that. And then the Kevlar helmets and rifle shields. Um, I have seen a lot of information on this and the Kevlar helmets are um. Are super important and and it's actually like the second leading cause of death in the officer-involved shootings is in the head. And so I actually think that there's a very, I mean, twenty-two thousand is. Is a pretty minimal uh cost to protect our people as well as the rifle-reading shields. Um, again, I don't know. Uh and I'd be, I'm I'm open to ideas, I think there is some value in. Spreading this cost out. Uh if two is needed, I can, I can get there, I mean, because we're only talking a small amount, but if if one is applicable, I don't know. I don't know what equipment you guys have now, um to mitigate that. But again, those, those are pretty minor costs compared to the body worn cameras uh in the F T, so that's my thoughts on it.
I had a quick question, so y'all bought seven body cameras before, uh. And so.
Correct.
It it's recommending fifteen, and so I'm just kind of wondering. Uh, why we would need fifteen, and not say, you know, I mean, if we need it, we need it or whatever, but that's my question, I guess.
Our C S Os have never had a camera. Here's the community, sorry, the community resource officers. Um, they have never.
The score.
Oh, sorry. Community Services Officer.
Community Services Officer.
Moody.
Moody.
Correct.
Talking, okay.
So. He has never, he has never carried a a body camera, so. That number includes getting our, getting our community resource officers a camera, that would be two there. Um, and then just that, the number just is. Giving every sworn officer a camera that is assigned to them, and they would have that with them. As as Counselor, Counselor Sheldon said, to and from work. Um currently, you have to dock those at the office charge, and if you're driving home or to court. And you haven't been there, you don't have a camera on your person.
So you're having a couple extra in case they need to.
And and usually you do want at least one or two extra, just in case one goes down, it takes a while to get those shipped back to the company and get those repaired.
So last time we talked, uh I kind of made a motion at the last meeting to kind of allocate, I think, I think we were given the number one hundred and forty-seven thousand times two. Which is two hundred and ninety-four thousand, and um, you know, you're you're talking. You know, kind of indicating that you, you know, could, could um support, live with a hundred, one position plus the equipment. I guess I kind of feel like. You know, it's kind of up to you, you know, if we can make the decision to kind of go ahead and allocate that, and then depending on what, you know, if your preferences, you know. Do some of each, that if that meets your need now, then we've got a little time to kind of get the budget ready and find these other funding sources. I I guess I, what I'm saying is I would rather consider with the one position and then have the equipment, because that's not a recurring cost. Um. So I'd still be looking at two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Or something in that neighborhood to kind of allocate out of our contingency to support, I'm sorry about that.
Time's up.
Um, so to support uh your, your needs there for both um another officer. Uh for the next six months and equipment for everybody.
Chris?
I'll, I'll repeat it, I'll be way more succinct. Last meeting, I said I was gonna do three hundred thousand. Chief, thank you, you you said you could live with one person and and the equipment, one person's a hundred forty-seven, the equipment's a hundred forty-two, that's two eighty-nine. That's a one-time buy for the equipment, I'm all for that, we buy the equipment. We give the the officers what they need, we we give chief one extra person. Uh given the financial of the city and how we earn money and our, our gross revenues gain each year by a minimal amount, three percent. Uh we would be able to fund that officer for multiple years uh without anything changing. But I believe in our staff to be able to give us more creative ideas to get more officers for Chief Husky in the future, so I would like to uh. Put forth, uh we, we give him the permission to hire one additional officer and and fund all the effort for it.
So.
So is that a motion?
Well. Do we need a motion?
I didn't make a motion, I just was giving.
I just have a quick question.
Okay.
Okay. So. I see the additional body cameras of, for fifteen people. And but then it looks to me like the tasers are for all of the additional officers, so I guess my question is, do we need all the tasers? And same with the Kevlar helmets, is that an accurate amount for the staffing that we're going to have? So I just want to get an actual read on what kind of, what money amount we're actually asking for.
So you've already, I'll jump in and you can backfill up, you need to. Um, council already approved the purchase of tasers for the existing F T that we have, so this additional cost here is just acquiring. Uh, four. Additional tasers, we may even be able to tack that onto the current order potentially, I don't know if we can squeeze that out or not.
Four tasers for what positions?
Well, so again, that is, that would be. That would be outfitting your fully-staffed. Department per the staffing study, right? So those four additional tasers would be reflective of the three additional F T that the study. Shows, not just the one that you're looking to hire currently, and the community resource officers. So.
They're gonna be carrying tasers?
They al- they already do. And. They, they, so with this. Yes, with this existing taser purchase, we were trying to save money. So what you guys have already approved, we were gonna have, uh we have the older tasers, we were gonna continue running with the community resource officers.
Gotcha.
Keeping in mind that, that those are going to break down, wear out, and they will not be replaceable. So this. I just included basically two extras. To outfit the C R W now, while we're asking for it. Get them the same equipment, the whole department has all of the same equipment, the same training. And we don't have to worry about continuing trying to scam together old tasers, uh. And and I do, I do have an opportunity to sell those old tasers back at this time for a. It's, it's, it's not huge, it's like a hundred dollars a taser, but they're operational, functional, so I can at least get something back to the department.
Thanks.
So you, so I just gonna be clear, we're gonna have tasers with for uh Officer Moody and um. The community services person will both have tasers, is that right? And body cameras. So.
Correct. Yeah, so.
I have one question bef, if, once we're done with this.
Guys, take one point of clarification, because I, I think I heard half of that question, I just want to make sure that everyone here, yes, that includes the. Uh, grant-funded position through the county of a community services officer that is in its final stages of drafting I G A, so that will be coming back before the council very soon. But that, that is another one of these F T Es that we're talking about here as far as doing a taser.
What other equipment is that officer gonna re- require?
Uh so a vehicle and the I G A includes um covering eighty percent of the vehicle acquisition costs. Um, they'll need uh computer, um phone, uniform, attire. Um. Yeah, a a vest, L V V vest, but that's, that's it.
So we don't need accounting for that, correct? Like in the bu, in the budget when?
Estimates, yes, I mean, when we, when I submitted the grant proposal, it was estimated cost, so I don't have. The current cost of a vest, uh we have a vehicle estimate that we would like to move forward with. Um, of course, that pricing can change slightly, but generally speaking, yes, the vast majority of that's included in what that grant proposal.
Well, and I mean, you've already accounted for it.
The opioid funding was what you released the twenty percent.
Yeah, so. Um. It was not accounted for in our budget because this was a post-budget process um grant opportunity that, that unveiled itself. Um. The grant application. I don't want to answer this. In theory, I think that there's going to be quite a bit of homelessness response and work that this new position will do that directly relates to the opioid crisis. We have opioid funds. Um, and as long as we can prove a direct link, we can use those opioid funds to pay for our twenty percent share. Part of that will be some internal tracking to make sure that we, you know, are saying, yes, this call for service was opioid-related or, you know, however that. Tracking mechanism works out. Um, so we have funding available in the budget. From opioid funds we perceive, those are not funds that were originally budgeted for because we didn't know what those funds looked like, and so we'll probably have to do a supplemental budget to. To true things up, but we do have revenue in through the opioid funding. Um, uh payments that have been made that can offset that twenty percent share that we'll be providing the pay for.
Okay, so I had a question last week or last meeting about contingencies, because we're talking about. Spinning down this contingency, but I wanted to know where we stood on other budget items and contingencies, do we have any? We had a few months left.
Yeah.
We're gonna blow out, or we're gonna have uh, is everyone gonna come in within the budgets?
Yeah, generally speaking, um, and I'll focus on the general fund to answer this question, not the utility funds or anything like that, but generally speaking. Um, the general fund is, is pretty solid, you know, council hasn't touched through five hundred thousand in contingency yet. The general city contingency is about uh one point one five million, I believe. That hasn't been hit yet, that's still full. Um, nearly every department does have some contingency, some of those have been hit slightly just with operational needs, but no one's operating in a deficit. At the moment, with the exception of our legal department, because we've had incurred a lot of legal fees this biennium for a variety of different reasons. Um, that will probably need, if I had to. Put an estimate out today, maybe a hundred thousand dollars to offset the additional legal expenses we've incurred throughout the biennium, but I'm certain that can be. Easily absorbed with the general fund contingency, that what we've done in the past is pull from there to cover those legal expenses, so. Generally speaking, we're pretty stable on a contingency front.
Cool.
I'll make a motion, and I will uh make a motion that we um lose three hundred thousand dollars from the contingency fund. To the police department for the purpose of hiring one officer, some body cameras, tasers and other safety equipment.
Second. Alright, there's a motion by Counselor Walker and a second by Counselor Sheldon. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nays. Motion carries, awesome. I thank you, everybody, thank you, Chief.
And then we'll revisit this in the budget and we'll look at those others, right? That's the, that's the key, right?
Yep. And that'll certainly give uh staff time to work. It'll, it'll give us the time we need to work through a, a long-term, sustainable.
I've said several times, I think, the law enforcement budget and um just public safety is the most important thing we do as a council body, so. Thank you, everybody, for all your support of our police department and particularly our police for everything you do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, uh moving ahead, uh options for alternative wastewater treatment, um. Systems during the development moratorium, welcome back, Kelly. Is he nice?
Thank you.
Oh.
Good. Yeah. My back's hurting from sitting on a plane and a car ride too long. Um. So what we have before you tonight, we um. We've kind of made mention of this in the past, but this is kind of our first opportunity to talk about it. More fully. So what this is before you tonight is, um when we, when we started the development moratorium um on October third, twenty twenty-two. So about twenty-five months ago. We, we really didn't have a good sense of how long it would go on before we would have more capacity available. Since that time, we have a lot more information, um. And a lot of good progress has been made by Jenny and her team with. Um, getting additional capacity, if you remember, we only had a hundred and twenty-year use at one point. And now we have um over four hundred. Unfortunately, even though we've made a lot of good progress and we've done a good job of shoring up more ERUs, we're, we're probably at least another two years away. From having additional ERUs to give out to the development community. And so we're kind of in a holding pattern as far as new land use applications go, at least, at least new land use applications that have.
And so we're kind of in a holding pattern as far as new land use applications go, at least at least new land use applications that have. New ERUs associated with them. So we've been getting some inquiries from different commercial and industrial developers. Um a few that I put in this staff report. Are uh at the corner or the intersection of Champion Way and Industrial. One is owned by Joey uh Gambino, um and he wants to develop that property for a manufacturing business, Rogue Fabrication. As you probably remember, in early October, he came and spoke before you and had asked the city council to. Entertain the idea to modify the moratorium so that it would allow for more. Um trading of the ERUs between different properties for different uses. Uh about a month ago, the city council wasn't too interested in looking at that at this time. Um however, you know, there's other opportunities out there. A second one is at the same intersection, but on the other side by the Fred Meyer gas station. That's owned by Brad Picking and he's looking to construct. A basically a shell building for an industrial tenant for manufacturing as well. So both of these locations will be bringing in living wage jobs. Especially in Joey's case, it's actually bringing in metal is manufacturing. Uh which is, I think, goal three of the Economic Development Strategic Plan that the city council adopted. Is that earlier this year or last year? It was very recently. So, you know, in the past, the city typically requires. New development sites to hook to our sewer treatment system. I mean, obviously. However, we have allowed in certain cases for septic tanks to be installed. Usually it's when the sewer line is over three hundred feet from. A development site like a new single family home or something very small, not a subdivision. We have had a few cases like the Jehovah's Witness Church on Bluff Road and the Space Age Gas Station on Orient Drive. Where we have actually allowed them to install septic tanks because the sewer. Was so far away, it was cost prohibitive. I think in the, in the case of Space Age Gas Station, it would have cost. Over a million dollars just to extend the line, and that wouldn't have included the needed pump station to send it back up towards the city, so they. They would have spent millions of dollars just on the sewer alone.
What was the other one, Space Age and what?
Uh the Jehovah's Witness Church on Bluff Road. And I'm, that was built before I worked here, so I'm not really sure the process that they went through. Typically, churches, as. As you're aware, are pretty low users except for one or two days of the week. Um so that was probably part of the reason for allowing a septic tank there. So without kind of looking at alternative treatment systems, we're kind of in a holding pattern for the next two years, as I talked about. Um we kind of run the risk of losing employment opportunities and businesses such as Joey's and Brad's. And I think we do run the risk of losing manufacturing jobs, um which is something that a lot of small towns like Sandy cut it. Um so what what staff's really wanting the city council to talk about tonight, this is more of a discussion and give staff direction on. Is would you like staff to look into alternative treatment systems? So I listed a few here. Um you know, your most al- your most traditional alternative treatment system in a city would be a septic tank in a drain field. There are some other ideas like temporary restrooms such as porta potties that get pumped and then. Uh the dump, the dumping of those porta potties is outside of city limits. There's gray water systems, composting toilets, and then last but not least, holding tanks. I have. Holding tanks have done properly, can be done very well. Um the only problem is if. They're not pumped on a regular schedule, they can then actually overflow and dump out onto the ground, so they're not, they're not the best system. What's that?
No different than a septic. You don't pump it, they will do the same thing.
Yeah, holding tanks are are holding everything, the solids, the fluids, everything. Yeah.
Just pointing out if you don't want to maintain them. This is what will happen.
So I I know D Q is actually okay with holding tanks in certain circumstances. Unfortunately, with like Mister Picking's property, I don't think that'd be a good option because. If it was to overflow, it would flow right into a creek in a wetland, so I don't, I don't think we would want that as an option. So as I say in here, they they all have their advantages and disadvantages. Um and then, you know, staff's not really at this time at least looking at. A solution for high sanitary sewer producers, um such as subdivisions, multi-family development breweries. Um we would still prefer those to hook to our system in a couple of years. So if staff is instructed to move forward, some some things to consider and just kind of think about is. I would be working with our city attorney and public works department on drafting an ordinance. Specifying the land uses that could apply for an alternative system, so we would need direction from stat, from the council. On what they would like to be included in that ordinance, if you're open to it. Another thing would be specifications around the variance process to waive the sanitary sewer requirement. So I don't think, and I think our, in talking to our attorney, he agrees with this as well, we'd still want it to go through some sort of variance process before the planning commission. So that we would actually issue a land use decision, and in that land use decision, there would be conditions such as the third bullet point, which would be. Prior to receiving occupancy for the new building, you would have to record a mechanism. Um to abandon the septic system, and you'd have to also record what's called a non-remonstrance agreement. So that they wouldn't try to remonstrate against connection to the sewer system.
So so then for, say this moved forward. Would they be given then priority when we get ERUs? Okay.
Yeah, and so uh that would be, that's what Josh and I were thinking is.
Yes.
Um you know, say we get the hundred ninety ERUs to years from now, and and let's just, let's just throw out a number, say. Twenty ERUs were the equivalent of twenty ERUs. Were developed out there at, you know, Joey's site, Brad's site, a few, maybe a few other industrial sites. Then when the hundred ninety come for the city, we would take twenty off. And they would have to connect to the system. They'd have to pay the S D C. They would start incurring a utility bill and the the hundred ninety would go down to one seventy essentially.
Why?
Because they would still have to connect.
I understand all that, like why, why do we force them if we, we're still under a limited capacity? They have a system that seems to be working. Why are we forced, why are we uh. Using up those ERUs in a system that's already working? Why not wait until it's more wide open? I'm just, I'm just asking.
You could, I think you could potentially do that. I think. We would need to talk to the attorney, our attorney's office more about how D Q and the E P A would feel about that.
Okay.
So um.
What was, I, I didn't, I missed the question.
I I'm wondering why, if you have a septic system, right, and all of a sudden we get a hundred and ninety ERUs and we're still limited in our capacity and the septic's working.
Yeah.
Why would we force them?
I would say in the moratoriums.
Done.
I agree.
I'm not disputing that we have a problem and we're trying to find a creative solution, but there is a reason that we built. Municipal sewer systems in the first place to get rid of septic systems. Because oh, long term, they pollute, they don't get maintained, they create toxic messes and nastiness, and that's why we went this.
So sewer systems.
I think we have moratoriums.
I'm not saying that. That we can't poke fun at the problems we've had with our sewer system, but let's not lose sight of why it was invested in in the first place, okay? If we go off and we start creating a lot of septics, we're creating a problem that existed fifty years ago. That was then reconciled with the evolution. I don't, I don't wanna go down that path.
I think that's fair, but I also just wanna be cognizant that. If we're under a limit of a hundred ninety ERUs, which isn't very many.
Yeah.
Now we're restricting ourselves down further when we have a mechanism. So it's either like the mechanism works for the alternative or it doesn't. And again, like I think once we make these.
I think there are better mechanisms, which is be part two of my statement, where I was about to go. I think septics are the worst solution or holding tanks.
But I think this isn't, but we were talking as if it's a permanent solution.
Right.
Right, when that's, that's not what this is, is now there may be a moving target, but a few of us are suggesting.
We don't have a date. We don't have a feasible plan to implement it yet, so. We're talking about a period of time that's has no end date today.
I think I know where you're going, so.
Yeah.
Please, sure.
So there's other solutions out there. I know Jenny doesn't like him, but she's leaving, so it doesn't matter. And I'm frankly, I'm not sure why you're not, both of you aren't up here presenting this, co-presenting this, because I think it, it has direct ramifications on. On the public work side too. Uh in terms of how we would migrate down the road.
Public Works is fully supportive of this. I wanna make that very clear.
I believe that. I'm not. So I'll make that very clear. I think there's other solutions that we could look at. There's, there's these uh. Affluent, pressurized affluent system, step systems that could be utilized. You could create a. Area down in the industrial way, Champion Way, where they utilized a single leach field. For multiple businesses down there using one of these systems. We could figure out how to manage it within the. Realm of maintenance from the public work side with costs being shared back to those landowners who are benefiting from it. Would have a much lower risk, be a much more modern solution than going back to a, you know, a hundred year old septic system approach.
So you're saying an approach that would be publicly owned?
Possibly.
Because it can't, it can't be privately owned because by state plumbing code, you can't cross property lines with a private. System, so we would have to navigate, we'd have to navigate that.
And so I think we'd have to look at how they did it. Don, aren't those more permanent?
They are permanent, and that's the nice part is, they could be permanent.
Well, and I get that, but this entire conversation is based off of something that's not permanent. But if there's a permanent.
We have. We have a problem that has no solution in terms of our wastewater problem right now, right? We don't have an affordable option. This might be a way to start building capacity into what we have. With and allow for expansion in other areas.
I don't, I don't disagree, and I like where you're going, and I like the idea. I just don't wanna pigeonhole. A permanent solution if we're looking for, if we're looking for temporary solutions. If we're looking for permanent solutions, then that changes this conversation.
Yeah, like Don. The cost isn't gonna be, yeah, you know, we're talking like huge.
But Don, explain to me how, and I mean this really, but like, so we have our facilities plan, right?
Yeah.
And we're talking this parallel path that's going along it with the these, the septic, you know, this septic treatment kind of deal that then. You actually moratorium then, so we go into the, we go into our sewer system. But how is this any different than bringing in your investigative work into what you wanna do into this alternative path? It's still, I don't see why they don't live aside alongside each other. Why are? Why can't we move ahead with this and simultaneously look at what you're suggesting, just like we're looking at the facilities plan? Like why, why do we have to stop this? To look at what you're suggesting?
So right now, we have a staff report, the list is set of options.
Yeah.
Well, and what I'm proposing is not on there.
Okay.
So it's an incomplete set of options. Well, and I, and I don't, I don't disagree. I just, I wanna, I wanna point out that in the recommendation, it says. Staff recommends that the city council, excuse me, explore alternative treatment systems for certain land uses. During the sanitary sewer moratorium. So to me, that leaves the door open for any.
I'm not supportive of. Septics, individual septics. I think there's just better.
Shorter or longer.
Shorter or longer.
Okay, I'm just trying.
In the city, that I recently went away from it.
Okay.
You should lose sight of that. I think there's better solutions in the short term. And in the long term potentially. I don't know if it's going to pencil out for a long term, but definitely where we have no long term solution right now. There may be something there that we haven't looked at, but I think we should. So I think it could be.
Yeah, so.
Perfect testbed for for these guys that are looking for this.
So one thing I would caution you on is that these people that are coming to us, they're, they're wanting to move forward soon. And they're not wanting to wait on the city. And right now, they're waiting on the city already with the moratoria. And this would be creating a system that would benefit a whole area. They'd be waiting on us to design and install that as well.
Important point, and I see you wanting to jump in here, Catherine, but it's. It's not just that they don't want to. They, and many times can't wait because they're financial lenders and everybody is gonna allow them to need full assurances that they're gonna be able to develop. And right now with our moratorium and our ERUs, they're just not able to have that. So you take a step back into the larger projects. You know, down the way over here, if you ever wanna bring in a Costco or somebody like that, they're going to need assurances. And whether that's because we're allowing an alternative septic treatment. Or we're, you know, but whatever it may be, or we're guaranteeing you these ERUs, whatever it is. They need, not, we feel good about it, kinda, maybe, probably, they need to know, you know.
You don't know with the septic until they go through the permitting and get a per- uh a a test, what's it called, the uh.
Perkulation test.
Per test. So they don't know today just because we write the code that says they can do it.
Okay, I'm just gonna jump in, because um. What I heard you say earlier, though, was that for the property, and it's actually on the northeast side. Um I think the staff report says they're both on the southeast side or something like that. Anyway, um it's on the northeast side.
They're both on the south, but one's on the east and one's on the west.
They're both on the same side of the street.
Yeah. They're both, they're both on the south side of Champion and they're on the e- the east and west side of industrial. Yeah.
Anyway, um for the one. That's, well, anyways, what I heard you say was that it was too close to a creek or whatever, and so that's where. You know, to tell. Gambino, yes, you can go ahead and do this, but then the other property owner that wants to do it, oh no, you can't do it. Doesn't feel really good to me, so I would rather, kinda, if there is some other option. And maybe it's done through an L I D district or something like that where, and so, you know, part of it, where it does have to cross property lines, comes, you know, the. Part of the city easement or something like that. I would like to see us explore something that works for both of the landowners. Uh in question, because it doesn't really help us to do just one and not the other. The other thing I would say is that. I'm not really understanding how the ERUs. Either got out all allocated or, you know, because some of these how, these developments are nowhere near. Breaking ground on construction, and so I know we've maybe tied the ERUs up and. And, you know, allocated them on on the paper, but they don't have like a certificate or anything like that. But but my other question is, I wanna know how many homes on an average year or an average four year period. Um have failed septic tanks and need to um be, need to hook up to the city.
It's like one or two every year.
Okay.
Probably like one.
Right, and so um. What I'm gonna tell you is that those people would much rather be given permission to go ahead and reconstruct whatever part of their septic. Field or, you know, drain field, if it's this tank or whatever, um then then pay. Far more than the twenty six thousand uh dollars your estimate is, because it, hooking up to the sewer would be far more than that. And so, one of the options that I would see is going ahead and just saying for, till the moratorium's over. If anybody wants to connect to the sewer and pay that big, huge bill, they can, but in the meantime. We give them, you know, the o- opportunity, just like we're giving, um you know, these other folks. The opportunity to go ahead and reconstruct their.
We already do that. So they they submit what's called Lux Form to our office, and I fill it out and I tell the county. Whether we want them to connect to our system or not. So right now, we're denying all them and saying, please allow them to repair the septic system. And everybody's doing that.
But we set aside cer- so many ERUs to do that.
Because the county can come back and say, in this particular case, we will not allow them to repair the septic system. You have to allow the connection.
We're talking about two ERUs here, is that right? I'm sorry, what, how many?
Uh so I think you're getting two things conflated here. You're talking about. Residential houses that are already existing with failed septic tanks. That's a different thing than somebody that wants to develop a site for the first time.
Well, it isn't.
That's, no, it is. So with repairing a septic tank. That goes through Lux process, and then I can say whether we'll allow it or not, and then the county can reject my allowance if they want. They've approved the last four, I've allowed that. This other one, they wouldn't, without you guys approving something through an ordinance, the county is gonna say. That's within three hundred feet of sewer line. You must connect to the sewer. We will not allow a septic tank. So they're two different scenarios, like drastically different scenarios.
I I get that, Kelly, and I understand we do, we would need to put together some sort of a resolution to to uh allow this to happen. But what I'm also saying is that. What I was being told before was that we had so many ERUs set aside for the replacement of septic tanks in. In the areas that they don't have it in the residential.
Yeah, we do.
And so I would, like I said, I would also like. And then maybe that's just your permission or something, but however many ERUs that is, I would like the ability to kind of go ahead and. Free, you know, work something out with D Q that we will be allowing them to go ahead and. And.
Can I?
Reconstruct if they need to, because it is a huge amount of money to our residents. And I get the, you know.
I'm pretty confused on that.
I I would like to make one more point.
Please.
I would like to share a picture.
I'm waiting for you.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Picture may be helpful in this case. Whether or not it can actually be worked here, it's something we need to look at. It's a very simple picture. I'm a simple person. Jenny said that I probably, you know, drank the salesman Kool-Aid. Maybe I did, but I.
They had a good sales pitch.
But I've also been a salesman and selling stuffs too, so sometimes there may be something there.
Makes you more susceptible?
It maybe, maybe. I didn't get any swag from him, so there you go.
And he's like, I gotta chime in on this.
So the the concept is that you're sharing some common infrastructure, and it can be relatively small. That's what. Interested me about this particular example is you're talking about relatively close proximity, not a lot of piping that would require. And you're also talking, we talked about the proximity to wetlands. Well, maybe the actual. Um, leach field, if you will, is located somewhere safer and better. I think these kinds of systems open this up. It, it probably is, it would be beneficial to the landowner because they don't have to worry about. As much land that they're dedicating to those sort of things as well. The maintenance could be shared. There's ways to structure something like this, I think, and make a lot.
And I get that, but I don't, they can research it.
I just want to make sure they do.
So can I make, I'm going to make a motion. I move to auth- authorize city staff and city attorney to draft an ordinance and other mechanisms. To enable and regulate alternative treatment systems to select land uses during the current wastewater development moratorium.
Just for a second. I'll say that.
Clarification? So, so are we saying? So are we saying that just, you know, the three sixty-second bell stuff comes in and we're gonna. Allow all that to get.
This doesn't say any of that.
No, they gotta write an ordinance.
They've gotta write an ordinance. They've got to figure out what it's going to look like. They gotta bring that back to the council that we then vote on. They may do homework and bring back an ordinance. We need to look at it and say, holy smokes, this is what we were.
This is just giving them a lesson.
What I'm asking is, are there any limits or sideboards to that?
Oh, well, let's, well, well, one is, again, those were the, those would be the things we would want to talk about when we see the ordinance. But some of that is, is my understanding is this is for commercial development, right?
Commercial and industrial, yes.
Yeah, we're not talking some residential development. We're bringing in a bunch of septic tanks.
That's correct.
Commercial, so stuff like that, a- absolutely, yeah.
I guess that was kind of what I was hesitating about is I wanted that, make sure that that was addressed somehow maybe in the motion and it's. It's specified. I, well, I know, but it wasn't specified in the motion, so I'm just trying to be.
To me, that's the understanding of what they're asking, but.
Okay, with both the motion and with.
Who's second?
I'm sorry. And the second is it?
Okay, okay, commercial or industrial? I, I mean, we're not passing the ordinance, so I'm fine. I just really want to make sure that we acknowledge what Dawn has to say.
And I, and I agree. I think we should look at all sorts of options.
All right. All right. There's a motion on, on the floor in a second. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nays. Motion carries. Um, thank you. The only thing I would add to this. Is, is as you guys, as a council body, um, move forward at looking at this. Um, I, I, I don't, and, and maybe it's a mute point because I see here it says it only goes as high as thirty-six thousand or something in these systems, so. Um, maybe it really isn't that cost prohibitive, but. You know, facade improvement programs, stuff like that, that we have, um, that we utilize to get things done, that we want to see improved in our community. There could be a thought here if you have some major development that you want to have happen, but they're saying that this septic system is too cost prohibitive. To where maybe there could be some sort of program that helps, you know, with offset that cost. But again, that's not, that's not part of this. That's just a suggestion and providing all of you as you move ahead to maybe consider. And maybe I'll testify about it.
And so. Obviously, this is a one-off, but when we start to have the, the full waste water. Taking the output of that, those holding tanks significantly reduces the mass load. And the other things. So the effective ERU of each one of those units feeding into this is way less than a typical. Summer connection and that should be something that should be considered as well.
Well, and. Don, I mean this, it's all seriousness. I, I didn't look around this council and see a bunch of people like shaking their head no. When you were, when you were talking, right? And so I, I, I think it's important to say, like. This council is interested in looking at reasonable alternatives and. You know, and with, and with your position on, you know, the oversight committee and, and all that, you know, there's. I think you have a reasonable path forward to, to be exploring those and be. Working with others to do so. So. Anybody thinks we're out of line on that?
Jenny stood the wrong, can I see what she was doing?
Yeah, sure.
She's just gonna say, Don drank the Kool-Aid.
Yeah, yeah, she's right, yeah.
I disrespect your opinion.
Remember, you're short, you can go ahead and say.
I agree with Kelly and I agree with Don. There's opportunities to explore certain things. What I would like council to remember and Don you particularly. It's the cost of owning these assets. Um, many developments put in a pump station because they have to lift something to connect to the sewer. It's just substandard materials and then it gets, oh, and then it gets absorbed by public works in the city. That has to maintain a failing asset. It's no different from roads we've taken over or other things. So the question, so. I think this is really interesting, but. The engineers and the attorneys and the code enforcement needs to look at this. If this isn't maintained, if it doesn't reduce the load. Then it's going to go to our treatment plant and then we're at risk for a lot of different fines. And so that's my only point.
And they're, I accept them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our staff will certainly bring back a work session before we just cold turkey. Here's an ordinance, let's, uh, hash it out and, and vote on it tonight. So, I mean, this will be a, a interactive process to make sure we get where the council's comfortable and then. The, the, the development community feels like they have some assurances to, to develop.
Cool. All right. Thank you. I guess I could have just said it's not an either or.
Tyler, I was gonna ask you a question on the record though. If, since the city owns property, can the city own ERUs?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we, we. We currently own.
Yeah, there's a whole strategy there.
For that. That's, I was, I was thinking about three seconds, two seconds about when he brought it up and I was like.
But, yeah, I mean, I think there's a strategy for future. Meetings of talking about acquiring maybe dying assets that have ERUs.
Right, that's what I'm going to.
Yeah. I didn't just come up with that, staff.
Well, also, you know, I, I believe that not everything, this is just, you know, common history and what we've already seen is all those lists of. Of developments that have gotten approval do not all pencil out, they do, do not all get constructed. And so. When the extensions expire, we're going to have extra ERUs to, to give out. I really want to make sure that we're. I feel like we should be issuing ERUs based on whatever the number of units were in final order. This business where they get approval at a final order and then they go and add nine more duplexes after the fact. Is not, I mean, I get that, you know, we're supposed to allow duplexes, but they're supposed to be putting that in their original proposal and not. Asking for that after a final order's already been issued. So that, that's the one thing that we're going to end up with extra ERUs to hand out.
All right, cool. Moving ahead. Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate it. Um, all right, let's move ahead to, just gotta refine my place here, guys. Uh, IGA?
On-call construction contracts?
Yeah, let's go. Let's do it.
All right. Let's go into, into the ERU discussion. So, um. The decision is whether to authorize the city manager to execute contracts for on-call construction services for drinking water. And wastewater facility minor upgrades. Um. So we've been managing some other risks. There's a lot of buildings going on. We've had, we've seen municipalities build things and get zero bids. And we have a lot of work to do. Sometimes it's unexpected. The other risk we're managing is we have this fourteen point seven million dollar ARPA grant that this council. Was able to secure for wastewater. The grant expires in September of twenty twenty-six. And we intend to leave zero dollars unspent. So, um, city staff, in order to mitigate this, in order to spend the grants. We came up with an alternative procurement. Um, the OARs have procedures for doing, um, an on-call master services contract. Many utilities have them to maintain ongoing bodies of work. The city, I'm trying to speed up. The city. Followed these procedures. We held a public hearing. Um, we passed a resolution in May and we conducted an RFP. We got two bids for two really good contractors. They were evaluated and we issued the notice of intent to award. Um. There's funding in place for using these contracts and there's a list of the projects that we're planning to work on. Um, I don't want to read them all, but some of them are at the wastewater treatment plants. Some are with, are in our collection system, Northside Pump Station, Sleepy Hollow. And there's other improvements and these are all allocated towards mitigating our risks. So we don't run into compliance and see fines. And securing the hundred and ninety ERUs you keep hearing about. It's a, it's a conditional approval EPA gave us if we made some other improvements. So that's what these contracts are for. Um. The funds are included in the VN twenty-three, twenty-five budget. Um, and they'll be paid for by the ARPA grant funds as well as the WIFI loan. Although we don't have any projects as of yet identified in our drinking water system. We have lots of things all the time, um, reservoirs, other projects like that. So certainly have this, having this. This contract is good for two years. It can be expired. Uh, the. Sorry, I lost my place. The contracts are limited to a total maximum fee of five million per construction firm. As an accumulation of individual task orders. So. Aggregate, you know, three million, half a million, one and a half million, testing that. So there's, there's limits on this and we certainly don't have to spend the money, that we already do have projects underway and in design. Um, staff recommends that council authorize the city manager to execute contracts with James W. Fowler. And RL Reimers Company for a maximum total fee of ten million dollars, five million dollars per construction firm.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Did I rewrite that the ARPA funds expire in September of twenty-six?
Yes.
Will we expect everything to be done by then?
Oh, yes. There was an interim deadline that all these projects had to be under construction contract by December of this year. Which was really difficult. And at the very last minute, we got a reprieve. Um, so we moved that deadline to June, but that was another reason we were doing this. But having these. Having these is a really good, it provides us with a lot of flexibility to respond to, um. Any events that occur, which I sometimes do. Yes, which is what we like to do here.
Kathleen?
Jenny, this is, um, I, I totally support the, um, concept. I was just curious though, when you have two different contractors and they're both getting. You know, some part of five million dollars and apparently both of the, the need is all at the one location. How does that work when you have two contractors? Possibly working close together? Is that, have you kind of anticipated that? Any issues that might come from that?
Well. I thought what you were going to ask is how do we ensure competition? And so the way we do is we ask both contractors to bid. So we get the lower price.
Okay.
But, um, Wes Silva, who you met, will just delineate areas that they have control over at the wastewater treatment plant.
So there won't be a confusion of doing this kind of thing. Okay. All right. Thanks. Should I make a motion or?
At least, yeah.
Uh, I'll make, uh, I move to authorize the city manager to execute on construction contract services contracts. With James W. Fowler, Fowler Company and RL Reimers Company for drinking water and wastewater facility minor upgrades. As provided in the meeting packet.
Just a second.
Awesome.
Motion by councillor Walker, a second by councillor Holkinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nays. Motion carries. All right, moving ahead, uh, to the IGA with Portland Water Bureau.
All right. Well, you heard a little bit about this at the work session, but. We're here tonight to ask whether you will authorize the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Portland Water Bureau. To work collaboratively to design and construct drinking water facilities required to meet the bilateral compliance agreement for cryptosporidium. So. I don't want to rehash a lot. We spent forty-five minutes of your time. But, um, the bottom line is that we need to build a pump station and a pipeline, some of this located on Portland properties. We have signed, uh, a new thirty-year agreement with Portland as their wholesaler. And so we have been working in good faith together for quite a while now, about eighteen months. And this agreement. Formalizes the spirit of that. Portland is going to give us some land there. This delineates who's putting what pipes in. When Portland has excavated a large, uh, deep hole, we're going to pre-purchase some equipment for our pump station. They're going to put it in for us. All these kind of things to work together to save money. The two points I really want to drive home and I really have to give credit to Stan Tech. There are two elements here where we're looking at saving money for Sandy. One of them is about half of our pipeline we have to construct. We only have to build half of it now. Half of it is a pipeline they already have. They've agreed to turn it into a transmission. We will just pay to upsize that from, I think, a twelve inch to a sixteen inch or maybe an eight inch to a sixteen inch. But it saves us money, infrastructure and time. The other piece is we're at a higher elevation than the, than the plants. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't think we explained it very well. In our revenue reservoir. If we dedicate a certain amount of the height of that reservoir, if there's ever a fire at the Portland filtration plant, water flows both ways. We can send fire flow by gravity to Portland and they eliminate a generator, a number of piping and a number of things that are expensive that they don't want to maintain. So. As small as we are, we have assets where we can help and honestly, infrastructure is really expensive right now, whether you're large or small. So this agreement is the first of two. Um, nobody, there will be, this will follow with a second agreement. I don't think it'll be in a year. I think. Construction will have to be a little further advanced, but we're going to show our costs for doing this infrastructure. They're going to show their costs for doing this. And we'll have a tallying and we'll have a reconciliation. And these, these terms are laid forth here, but we also reference. The new thirty-year wholesale water agreement. Um, that is pretty much the gist of it. One thing we have done is staff's recommending council authorize the city manager to execute this IGA. Um, or an IGA that's substantially similar to the draft attached. There are a few minor changes. I know we don't normally do this, but the minor changes are, I won't be the one who's leading the project. There's a couple other minor things. Um, so these really are minor. Um, and given that there's an election.
Just want to say.
Well, but given that there's an election and things can change and the fact that we have been working without an IGA, we. We all collectively agreed that it was wise to bring it to you.
Yeah. And the city attorney has reviewed those areas that may have some minor changes and agreed that they're not substantial enough to warrant. A revisiting of the topic. It's minor enough that it's been consequential to the overall.
Has substantially similar language?
Yeah. You know, put that in there. The city attorney has reviewed that.
Thank you.
Signed off on it.
I'll make a motion. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a sus- substantially similar intergovernmental agreement. Man, that's a lot of souls. The Portland Water Bureau outside of that.
All right. Motion by councillor Sheldon and a second by councillor Maiton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nays. Motion carries. All right. Moving ahead. Uh, thank you so much. Appreciate it, Jenny.
Is this your last city council?
I think so.
Oh, wow.
Is it really?
Well, no. Where's the cake?
Do you have one more? Well, my, my last day is Monday, the eighteenth, so. Possibly.
Yeah, pretty much so.
Yeah, well, thank Jenny, Jenny, thank you so much for all of your tremendous work here for our community. You've really helped with that department a tremendous amount.
Thank you. It's been an honor to speak here. Thank you for all your faith in me. Like we've. There were some tricky waters, but, uh, you know, we're mostly through them, I would say.
Now, you know, find your, help find your replacement. Thank you. All right, uh, you're up, Tyler.
Thank you. Um, well, I was going to mo- note that.
Mo.
Mo. I was going to note that Jenny's last day is November eighteenth. Um, we've already sort of said some complimentary things, but Jenny truly has sort of. Um. Got us on the right track with some of these major infrastructure projects and, you know, just from a couple of the topics on the agenda tonight. You know, negotiating these things with the city of Portland to save us money, but also save them some money in the long run, the thirty-year wholesale agreement that. The list is not short of the accomplishments that you've been able to, to achieve while you've been here and the benefit that you provided to our community. So thank you very much. Um, there is no cake. Sorry that I didn't buy you a cake. Maybe I should have done that for tonight. Thank you very much. There was some.
The calories are there.
Um, we are working with a consulting firm to, uh, start the recruitment for the next public works director. We hope to have that live, uh, middle of next week. Um, they're working on developing the recruitment flyer, brochure rather, um, this week, do some minor edits and then get it live. Um, middle of next week so we can start that recruitment process. They'll be casting a wide net so we can get as large of a candidate pool as possible. And then we'll conduct the interviews internally and go through that process. So trying to move as quickly as possible on that so we don't lose ground. Um. Gotten some, uh, feedback from Jenny, um, for developing that recruitment flyer and some other key stakeholders internally. And then, um, you know, I plan to work with Jenny to, uh. Discuss key attributes and make sure that we're finding the right person to take over the, the team. Um, and she's graciously offered to help. Participate in that process as well. So thank you, Jenny. Um, secondly, you may see an unfamiliar face in the front row here. This is Tyler Wallace. He's our new finance director. Who has officially started as of today. Uh, Tyler has, yes.
Tyler too.
Um, Tyler has. Um Tyler has
I know.
Already been, you know, discussing what do we call each other and ourselves now because uh there's two of us and, and the financial software is Tyler and just gets a little the chief son is Tyler. We, we have a lot of Tylers now. We haven't really settled on anything. Um but Tyler brings about eight years of experience from the city of Portland as most recently the tax division manager.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Um and so I'm selfishly very excited to have him on board and starting that training process and relinquishing some of my duties over to him. Uh staff's excited to have him on board and just really looking forward to your time here. And thanks for spending your Monday night with the council.
Yeah, thank you. I'm really excited to get started. Just getting to meet the team. Really impressed with the team. Um you know, typical first day stuff right now, but you know, we're going to come up to speed and just, you know, be an asset as soon as we can. So just happy to be here.
Welcome, welcome.
And then last but certainly not least, we had a pretty major park opening on Saturday. Um the weather held out surprisingly for a few hours while we were there. I don't have an official count on how many attendees were there, but it was a lot. Um it was packed. Lots of great speakers, lots of great acknowledgement to the Parks and Rec team that really pulled that all together and, and made that dream into a reality. Um super fun. My kids had a blast. Maybe a sprained wrist, but I don't think it's broken. Uh not for me, from metal list. I'm sure there'll be plenty more.
On the one I saw?
Yeah.
Really? Okay.
I don't know. The way he landed, man, it's, it's
I thought, I thought we had more pride of as a problem on that time.
Well, he was he bit off a little more than he could chew.
It was so fun.
And I have a video of it and it just, oh no, oh no, that he's not going to make that. And then he just falls right on, over on his wrist. Um but they had a good time. I had a good time. I think staff had a great time and it was, it was uh nice to see so many community members um enjoying the first park opening we've had since Bournstead, which was twenty thirteen?
He's ten.
Okay. Did quite a while.
Yeah.
It's been a long time. Uh that's all I have tonight.
It's great seeing your family out there.
Cool. Yeah, Saturday was fantastic. Um I have to credit Kathleen with that vision for the pump track. Considering when she first started talking about a pump track, I didn't know what was and why the community would even want one. So um it, it's been neat to see it through and, and it was, it just felt really good. And I thought that was interesting when you said about the great speakers, since you were one of them, but you know. Way to call it out there, you know?
Yeah.
Um no, it, it was, it was really cool and it was nice talking to those consultants who were there and seeing their eyes just lit up with how many people and how fun it was. They, they were, they were personally um pleased, very pleased, I think, with, with the, the embracement. And even yesterday, Sunday, you know, as I'm driving out early in the morning and it's raining outside. There's kids crossing Pioneer and Mining heading down there with their bikes and I'm like in the rain. I'm like, okay. More power to you. So anyway, great. Um Jenny, man, I don't know. You're breaking my heart. I know I was mad at, you know, you know, saying stuff, but man, you've just really I, I really appreciated you coming on board and the work you've done helping us get that asset management acumen into the, the staff and, and starting to get it through uh council. Uh if I'm around for another um term, that's something that I want to see solidified at the council level is those policies that will make sure that future staff will continue to take those steps and, 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 and drive towards that good asset management, which to Jenny's point, which is exactly what she was talking about at the end, when she was chastising me for the total cost of ownership, because that's absolutely right. Has to be factored into that. So thank you and darn it, can I say? Um with that, uh getting excited for Winterfest. Uh if you guys know anybody who would uh elves or friends of the old man at the North Pole or somebody who would like to uh um help participate in the evening events, the, the not the, not necessarily the, the the big title ones, but the off night ones, the ones I go to and, and, and Mrs Claus and so forth. So anyway, well have them get in touch with me or, or uh Parks and Reps and we'll get them qualified because they got to get a, go through a background check and and be certified to go. So and we might even be able to help them with uh some costumes is what I've heard. So there you go. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, I, I've got nothing to add, but except I definitely really would um hopefully I can make council action proud.
Say something about bees or
Art and art.
Art.
Say something about art.
Art or bees, yeah.
Oh, every day.
Say something, we need to get the arts.
Oh, yes, yes. And, and art and bees.
That's all I got to say.
Filling Carl's shoes.
Sometimes it wasn't always that clear, but
Maybe not the, uh, the immediacy.
Yeah, all right. I can't leave.
Um I just want to thank everybody for that new park. I just walked around there uh with warm fuzzies and chills seeing so many people enjoying it of all ages, like littlest kids on those little no pedal bikes to, you know, grown adults flying over those bike jumps. It was just uh it, it just really does give me a, a huge amount of pride in our city. And I'm really excited for it. Um and thanks to all of you who helped made it, make it um give it funding to make it happen. And then of course, um you know, designers and Rochelle and her crew um were the ones that really delivered it. So they have been working so hard. I'm really excited to see it before. I, I think it would be helpful to have um uh consider a, a helmets required rule that gets implemented here pretty soon. Um and the other thing that what I think would be helpful is to really engage the skaters of Sandy and I'm sure Minty and Mike and those guys would just really uh and they even mentioned that they plan to do it, but engage them to help kind of be ambassadors uh and develop common guidance and rules uh and clear consequences for violating those rules. Um because they can really kind of um set, set the the guidelines for, you know, no, no bad friend talk, as we call it, say in our house. Everybody understands what that means, you know, no F bombs or all that kind of stuff. Um so just kind of being respectful. And I guess there have been a couple of issues of fighting or something down there in the last day or so, but just trying to be, again, those uh ambassadors, maybe they can work out some sort of schedule where at least one of them's maybe down there at least one or two week days. Um and really, I think, help uh give those kids some good guidance. So um and then thanks again to Jenny for all the major progress and the selection of good consultants. That's, as you've told me over and over, the most important aspect of getting this stuff done is getting the right people on the job. And so uh you were one of those people, but you also helped make, make the ripples in the pond go further by, by hiring good consultants. So we can go for it. So thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you.
Rich. Yeah, thank you, Jenny. Uh what Kathleen just said, and I think you kind of got us through the hard parts and now we just need to find the money. Is what it sure seems like, at least for the most part. So um that's a testament to your, to your, your work. So thank you. Clark County's going to be lucky. Uh the um the uh park opening was awesome. Uh I went back there the next day with my kid. And uh it was um really not that many less people. Also, it was super cool to see. I did stop raining for a little bit, so, but it was still super busy. I do want to make sure that um to Kathleen's point a little bit, um I really want to make sure and I'm excited to hear about how we're going to program that so that it gets used uh and, and thus like kind of, you know, building good role models out there for people to follow. Uh because Sunday there was, there was a fight and like three cop cars showed up and all that stuff. So um but I think, you know, the one thing I also did see is some of those older people did step in and kind of placed their own a little bit. So um yeah, but I think if we, if we program that properly, um you know, as we all saw, um it was a, it was a really uh neat event. My wife's cousin's a professional skateboarder and he was out there and was talking about how neat it was. Um and, and it just the, the possibilities. The possibilities that, that are, 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 are open for us if we did that. So um yeah, and I also want to thank everybody up here for uh supporting our police department. Um we, we did the we did this, this staffing study, like it's been a couple of years now. Um I knew that it was going to say, I didn't know, three, but I knew it was going to say that we needed people uh because they have been understaffed for a long time. And uh you know, I'm really excited that they're getting some proper safety equipment to, you know, not only keep thems- uh themselves safe physically, but also with the cameras and accountable and all of that. So uh I just want to thank everybody for voting for that. So thank you.
All right.
Yeah, it's a good thing you put a, my last day is this day because otherwise we just would keep you on for eternity. Your time lapse to, yeah, just continue. So thank you for all your hard work. Um and yeah, Clark County's very fortunate. So um yeah, um again, I'm just going to kind of do a repeat. Um it's super cool to see everybody out there uh for the park opening. Um really impressed with the level of some of the people out riding and how small some of the individuals who were on the big jumps were. So um I guess that's a testament to having no fear at that age. So um but really cool to see everybody out there enjoying it. So, so I
I'll echo with Jenny. I, I've been on council now. This is my second year. So I, everything I've learned about our wastewater and freshwater issues in Sandy came from your mouth, your reports and your staff. And you've made it where I can understand it. So thank you for that. Um I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss your expertise. And I can only hope we find somebody half as good as you are to lead our team here in Sandy. Um I did not go to the park opening with the crowd because all my kids are grown. So I waited two hours until it was over and the duck game was over. And I went and it was magnificent. I, I, I enjoyed looking at it. Um I did see the young riders. I was surprised by the old riders that were there, older than me.
I was gonna say, you're not talking about Chief Husky.
And, and then I was even more surprised because I got a few phone calls from friends that are my age that ride bikes. They were like, hey, can I stay at your house? And I, I told him where the best western was, but I'm afraid I'm going to get a few more friends I didn't have staying at my house. But um other than that, um I think it's a a great addition to our, our community. Um albeit my kids are all adults now. They they, they all told me they wish it was there earlier, but at least we have it now for the future generations to call on. Thank you.
Um I'll start with Jenny. Uh just thank you. You know, I, I don't think there's much I can say other than I do want to highlight something. I don't know if it's a good mention, and that's just the leadership you've shown outside of our city, you know, within your field of expertise and you know, I think uh kind of the real message is that Sandy has a major problem. But they hired a major and really serious person to be able to take on that challenge. And that was something I think really reputationally helped us significantly uh over the past year and your time here. Was just people understanding third-party agencies and people that we worked with that we, we were bringing in serious people to take this on and that were up for the challenge. And so for you to bring that to our community, it's very impactful. So thank you for that. Really mean that. Um the cop grant, I, I just uh you know, my time here as mayor, I've, I've said and I'll continue to say, I think probably the thing I'm most proud of is that public safety fee. And it's wasn't like the amount of the fee. Uh it was the fact that it was, it was installed, that we created it, that we created its own individual funding source for our police department. That fee might grow or lower or whatever. I don't want it to ever go away because it's a funding source that's for them and hopefully it grows as our residents grow. And I think this is right on heels of that, to be able to do something in my final weeks uh for this law enforcement department that I feel so impactful is very meaningful. So thank you, everybody, for supporting that and being part of that. Um speaking of meaningful Cedar Park, that was awesome. Um having everybody there, uh especially at those properties uh to see progress there was super cool to see the kids out there. Uh to see, we've talked all abilities a lot, uh but actually to see all abilities is something totally different. Uh to see those videos and see the young ones in the middle and then as you go out and the skills and all that uh the sitting area in the middle, you know, for the gathering. Uh it was a super cool event. Something I told Tyler afterwards, I just I really want to tell people is that we've talked a lot about these Red Bull events and like going out and trying to seek stuff. But guys, we don't have to ask anybody's permission to do anything. We just got to do it. And you think about the Sandy Mountain Festival Bike Derby that we've done every year. Maybe we don't change that. Maybe it just stays a small community event. That's fine. Or maybe we do, right? And maybe we go out for an R F P and bring in the right partner to come in and throw the big Sandy regional you know, the bike derby competition. Or maybe we glom on and we apply for and get one of these that we can attract. But don't just say, I just hope we don't get this major awesome park and say, oh shoot. Sandy's too small, too uncool. You know, we just weren't able to go and get, get those guys to come here. Uh we're better than that. We're the little inch in that could, right? And, and we can go and we can do more than that. We don't have to ask permission from anybody to do what's best for our community. Um small, uh okay, so one, I have one big initiative, not so big, but one initiative I'm going to be putting in front of council my way out the door. I'm going to be working with, with staff to run the numbers on. And that is, is when we were looking at our fees that day um several weeks ago, I came across what the business license fees are here in the city of Sandy. And it's not a lot, but it is, it is significant, especially for a startup new business. And so what I am going to uh work with staff on to run the numbers on is not to get rid of our business licenses here in the city of Sandy, but perhaps a waiver of that first year for that business, for that entrepreneur to be able to get off the ground and get moving, to be able to say, you know, uh at a boy or gal, go get them, go get there and go get that small business going. So we'll see how much that budget impact would be before we put that in front of you, but that will be something that I'll be working with staff to get in front of you in the weeks uh as we, as, as I get ready to get out of here. Um I wanted to also talk about, I was rushing here to get here tonight uh for my nephew's basketball game. And a big, not the only reason, but a big reason I'm leaving the mayorship is because I've gotten to a point where our kids are very active and they're doing a lot of things and we're taking time away from them. Uh as I'm out and about, I see staff members whose kids participate on these sports teams with my kids. And I see counselors whose kids and families are out there in the community. And we meet a lot of evenings. And uh we haven't moved that. We were meeting these same evenings when I was a shadow counselor at Sandy High School, you know, uh over twenty years ago. And you think about the debate that was recently going on on our community information page. It seems like people don't like to come no matter what time we have it. As, as is. So maybe explore that uh or at a minimum uh think of, we've done at, at councillor Sheldon's um behest or as he pushed for. We have done some new innovative things with our employees as far as their community service hours go, right? Uh in recent weeks and, and months, but perhaps we can continue to do things for a work-life balance. Uh because I know we have a lot of staff members that spend their evenings with us that can go pretty late into the evening, especially when the mayor gets on a roll. Um and finally is uh the election tomorrow. Uh just wanted uh to thank all the candidates and everybody who put their name forward uh to uh run and to be part of service in our community. It's a lot of times it's a thankless job, but as we all know, it's super important. So thank you to all. With that, I'll close our meeting. Thank you, everybody.